Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, all right. Happy Monday. We'll call the meeting to order. And I will ask the, our police chief, David Livingstone, to lead us in the pledge.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hopefully, that gets me out of a ticket someday. How many times do we have to do that to make equal one ticket? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lou Evinos? Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Litzter?
Here.
And Mayor Mashburn?
Here. Okay, time for the agenda review. Are there any items for agenda review? Any comments on the agenda? Seen none, okay.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Have a motion and a second call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Declaration of conflict. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Anybody have a conflict? Okay. This is gonna be a quick meeting, I can tell.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item two, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, item two, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for item two.
Okay. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item three C1, informational presentation by youth council member Ashlyn Rowe.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. My name is Ashlyn Rowe and I'm a junior at Simi Valley High School, Go Pioneers, as well as a fourth-term representative and current vice chair on the youth council. I would like to preface this report by saying it is an honor to be here. Tonight, I would, I will be providing an overview of the youth council's activities and recent actions. I'm excited to announce that the youth symposium, which was the combined event of the youth town hall and the youth summit, was a huge success. The event took place on Thursday, March 10th, and it is a pleasure to say that we are very happy with the outcome of this event. We worked extremely hard with the staff at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute, so we would like to express our warm thanks for helping the youth council run the event smoothly. With a focus on mental health, our dignified panelists, Dr. Hani Youssef, Dr. Angelica Chavez, and our very own Chief of Police, David Livingstone, provided insightful wisdom on effective methods regarding seeking professional help during mental health crises, two words of great encouragement. Also, much thanks to Royal High School and Valley View Middle School for attending our event. During the youth summit portion of our event, Valley View Middle School was able to create successful solutions to some of the most pressing issues we face in our community today. For those who are unable to attend our event, we hope you'll be able to turn in, tune in to the Simi Valley Youth Council YouTube to watch the playback of our two youth council moderators, Ella McRosten and Sumaya Akbar, lead our wonderful panelists in meaningful discussions. As we continue proceeding into 2022, our various committees have been hard at work forming proposals, committee plans, and in-person and virtual content on behalf of the youth council. All of our committees are in full swing working to complete our work plan goals. These committees include the tobacco use and prevention, prevention education, mental health, school infrastructure, sexual assault awareness and prevention, fundraising, youth summit, and talent show. Several of these committees have given specific reports as to their accomplishments throughout the last several weeks. Our social media committee has been primarily focused on keeping up to date with content for our Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube accounts. Next, our mental health committee, fundraising committee, and the sexual assault awareness committee have formulated specific work plans and proposals respective to each committee, including, but not limited to, guided meditation sessions, a March to Wellness College panel video podcast on mental health, and an in-person escape room fundraiser. Furthermore, the school infrastructure committee recently met with the school district staff to discuss concerns and propose solutions regarding internet accessibility and gender-inclusive restrooms. As a member of this committee, I propose creating an infographic that students, parents, and teachers of the Simi Valley School District can all use to mediate issues regarding the school Wi-Fi. The school district really liked the idea, so we will be working with them to launch this campaign in the near future. Finally, the tobacco use prevention education committee will continue to work with Bright Youth and our Simi Valley School District to host an interactive and educational event that will include the creation of a PSA, as well as bracelet-making stations that will be held on the Rose Patio Garden at the Simi Valley Public Library on Friday, April 8th, designed to bring awareness to the dangers of vaping and tobacco use. With our annual talent show coming up on Friday, May 20th, we are actively seeking solo and group acts to perform. If you or a friend or a family member love to sing, dance, play a musical instrument, or in a band, go to bit.ly/youthcounciltalentreg to register by April 22nd. Acts can choose to compete for cash prizes or perform just for fun. The best news is that the talent show will be held in person on the Cultural Arts Center's main stage. Well, it is in fact that time of year once again, where the youth council is extremely busy and has a lot on our plate, but nevertheless, we are excited to see how our work will positively impact the community. Being on the youth council has been one of the best opportunities I have ever been given, a place that has truly cultivated my skills as a leader and person overall. If you know any students that will be in the 7th through 12th grades next school year, we would like to let them know that we are accepting applications for the 2022-23 youth council term. Visit our webpage at simivalley.org/youthcouncil for more information on the process. I also encourage everyone to follow us on our Instagram at @simivalleyyouthcouncil to stay updated on our most recent events and developments. And with that, I would now like to conclude our youth council informational report. I would like to express my gratitude to Mayor Mashburn and the members of the city council for this opportunity to speak today. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you all and have a great evening.
Don't go away, Ashlyn. First of all, Councilmember Lou Evinos has a question for you, and then Elaine Lister also. Question or comments?
It's not a question so much as a comment, but I have to tell you, as a teacher and as a mother and as someone who's on youth council for three years, to see you, how much you've grown and to see you to come up here and speak, you know, in front of elected officials and in front of the audience, in front of the community, it is a point of pride for me. As, like I said, a teacher, as a mother, and as a former youth council advisor, this is, you know, what we prepare you for, for you to be able to come up here and speak so eloquently and do such a wonderful job, and I've seen you blossom so much in the past three years, and it's really exciting to see you, the future of our community, being engaged in this way and, again, making this a wonderful presentation. I'm gonna show it to my English students, like, this is how you do it. But all the work that you guys are doing, and I've seen you guys grow into the position as a youth council as well, in terms of tackling difficult issues, tackling issues that are uncomfortable conversations in our community, but that need to be had, tackling the issue of sexual harassment, tackling the issue of mental health, tackling the issue of discrimination, and really advocating for yourselves, it's just amazing. And know that your role here is always to, you know, suggest to us and to advise us as city council members what it is that our future, our youth, need and how we can address that in terms of our policies. So thank you for the report, I'm very proud of you, and I thank the youth council for all that you guys do.
Thank you so much, that truly means so much.
Council, our Mayor Pro Tem Litzter.
Thank you, Mayor. Did I catch at the beginning that this is your fourth-term representative? Is that?
Yes.
So I did the math, you were in eighth grade that, when you started this. So thank you for consistently being involved in this wonderful job. And I actually wanted, had a question about one of your comments. You're serving on a committee where you developed an infographic, you mentioned, that is being... Can you share just a little bit more what that means?
Of course. So we recently met with the Simi Valley Unified School District. They were in charge of, we talked to them about, like, school Wi-Fi. And so there's not really any kind of tangible way we can help solve the school Wi-Fi problems because it deals with funding and, like, funding allocation. So we, instead of kind of going more the financial route, we decided on more kind of having an infographic, like, something simple, like, students, teachers can use that can help with some of the Wi-Fi issues because they explained to us that even the Wi-Fi issues can be solved by even just powering down our Chromebooks, which actually not many of us were aware of. So we decided something simple could be actually more effective as of right now. I know the next school year, 2023, we will be having new computers, so I think for as the time, for now, the time being, it'll be most effective to use an infographic.
Excellent, thank you. I just, I appreciate you sharing that, appreciate your efforts there because that's critical. And I just had to add to your report that you mentioned that Dr. Youssef and Dr. Chavez spoke, and Chief Livingstone, I thought it should, for the record, it should be noted that it's actually also Dr. David Livingstone, so I just wanted to add that, just in case he felt left out. That was all.
My apologies.
Ashlyn was wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Judge?
I just wanted to say thank you for a very informative report, and you did an outstanding job delivering it.
Thank you.
When you came up to present your report, I think the first thing you said was you were honored to be here?
Yes.
We're honored to have you here.
Oh.
I think that's so much more important, and I specifically want to point out, and thank you for your service in the mental health work that you're doing. And that's, that's such a great thing, and it's, it's great that it's coming from the youth council and going directly into the schools, and I think it'll find its way upward and into the regular council and be a big help to our community. So thank you very much, Ashlyn.
Thank you.
I was just waiting for him to ask what high school you went to.
She said.
I know, I just thought you were going to reemphasize that. I went to Royal, so they pick on me quite a bit, so...
I think it's something about Go Pioneer.
But that was great, and congratulations, you did a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item five, public statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, item five, for a period of no more than three minutes each.
Before you call the first person, I want to slide somebody in that may have to leave, so I will give him an opportunity to speak, and that's our fire representative, Fire Chief Jeff Pike. He's here and wants to say a few words.
Sure.
We had a recent promotion within the fire department that I think is worthy of acknowledgement.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, council. It is my honor and behalf of the Department of Fire Department... Chief Dustin Gardner, we promoted one of our most experienced firefighters we have that have come up through every single rank in the fire department to our deputy fire chief position. And this is gonna be Assistant Chief Chad Cook. Well, he started today, was his first day, and he's gonna be our deputy fire chief. He has over 31 years of experience. He has traveled up and down the state of California and across the country as a type-one operations chief, running some of the most complicated brush fires. So we are honored, it's a privilege, to have him in this leadership role to lead all of our future firefighters and develop them into command and control positions. So it's an honor for us to have him in that position. So thank you for giving us this opportunity.
And I think you said you'd be able to drag him in in one of our future meetings.
Absolutely, yes.
All right.
And we won't miss him, he's a, he's a big gentleman, he's 6'4", loud, and makes everyone laugh, so he's a pleasure to be around. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to introduce him.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I thought that was appropriate. Now he'll have to go fight fires or something, so...
The first speaker is John Lapper.
Mayor Mashburn and City Council, John Lapper's top 10 list for our city council. Mayor Pro Tem Litzter, on your New Year's Eve resolution and acorn paper, you promised to keep the residents apprised of the council meetings on your Facebook page. Your last report was February 14th. Perhaps Mr. Litzter has left you speechless. I do enjoy your report, and I hope you will continue with him. Number nine, Councilwoman DeeDee Kavanaugh, please join the 21st century and Zoom. Zoom is not about a keyboard warrior saying things they wouldn't normally say in person. Zoom is a live person experience. You failed to respond to all of my emails and public statements, and now you vote against a live Zoom comment. Shameful and censorship. Number eight, please, Councilman Mike Judge, retire from the city council, as 12 years has been plenty. You continue to vote your personal agenda and those of your clan of bullies in town that do not represent Simi Valley anymore. Proof of this is your no vote on police cameras to protect residents and police officers that was requested by Chief Livingstone. Your no vote to fireworks civil penalties is further proof that you don't respect local ordinances which have produced zero fireworks citations in the last two years, which must make your friends happy. This sends a message that fireworks are okay in Simi Valley. Number seven, will Mayor Mashburn be out of order in commenting about a resident during public comments? Man up. Will Mayor Mashburn again ignore the Brown Act warnings from our city attorney? I am 100% against Zoom comments. Number six, will Simi Valley Police Department please look into a program like Thousand Oaks Police Department that puts on a program for young drivers called Start Smart Driving Program for Young Adults? Number five, California Highway Patrol recently did a speeding ticket operation on our 118 freeway. In one day, 105 speeding tickets issued with all speeds between 81 and 97 miles per hour. Contrast that with Simi Valley PD issuing 1,246 speeding tickets in 2020, 1,351 in 2021, for an average of 3.5 speeding tickets a day. This sends a message that speeding is not enforced in Simi. Even with only one motorcycle traffic officer left, 3.5 speeding tickets a day is ridiculous. Thank you, Simi Valley Republican Op Ed Commentary Response Team for taking us back to the 1970s with their speeches last council meeting about their antiquated fears of marijuana. Number three, thank you, Councilman Litzter, for voting no to revisiting local marijuana sales by seeking neighborhood council input as well as residents. Between Mr. Litzter's comments and your vote, it is obvious you two are stuck in the 70s also. Number two, last council meeting, two motions by Councilwoman Lou Evinos were ignored. I remind the council of their own code of ethics and conduct. Recognize the worth of individual members and appreciate their individual talents, perspectives, and contributions. And number one, Mayor Mashburn, since you have sold your house and are on, apparently moved in Texas, you should no longer be making decisions on Simi Valley's future.
Mr. Lapper, your time is up.
Okay, you got lucky. Read the acorn paper, it's there.
Paul Panico?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Paul Panico. I represent Panic Productions, which is a nonprofit theater organization. First I'd like to say, thanks for having me, it was a last-minute thing. I arrived, or I got a message about 5 o'clock that said, could I please come and talk about theater a little bit? As you know, it's been two-plus years, we haven't been able to do much, if anything at all. That's ruined most of the theater in our community, in our surrounding community. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, I lived in Simi for a while. Most, or some of the kids that work with me are from this area, and as you know, it's an incredibly talented area. And many of these kids go on, if you, if you look at my Facebook page, you'll see two or three that are right on, in Hamilton or Wicked, Waitress, shows that are now paying jobs. But that isn't the real key for us. I think what struck me mostly about theater was, I didn't do this when I was younger. I was 50 when I started doing theater, and I perform a little bit myself, but it kind of replaced sports for me. And what I found is theater is quite a bit like sports. It's a, it's a team. When you, when you establish a, a show and cast the people that are involved, it's a team. And I've never seen a team more supportive of everybody. It's incredible, and I was impressed by the young lady, all the things that she talks about that kids need is what you get in theater. And I think it's, for us, you know, again, I'm a nonprofit, which means basically I pay for everything, and I try to make money, which I never have. And so it's, it would be a great gift to, not to me, but to the kids that we use. I only have three minutes, so we'll keep it short. In September, we, Fred Henzel is gracious enough to give us an opportunity to put on a show called 13 the Musical. It's about 13-year-old kids who are coming of age, and it's not really a show about kids. It's a show that I think can relate to adults. Hopefully, you'll get a chance to see it, and know what I mean. And I think the, the last song, "We All Have A Little More Homework To Do", is apropos for our world today. And, and if you come, you'll get a chance to see that. So thank you for your time, and I hope that maybe we'll have an opportunity to continue to work in Simi Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan Glaspen?
I see a smile on Keith's face. Hi, Keith. Hi, everybody. Well, first of all, I have to say, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to present in person. This is very, very emotional for me to be able to be here in person after two years of desolation, what can I tell you? All of you know who I am, I know every single one of you people, and I think that you all know what Actors Repertory Theater of Simi and the Simi Valley Cultural Association represent in our community. We've been associated with the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center since 1995, since they opened. We've been presenting a live, a season of live theater there on stage and really building a wonderful reputation for ourselves and the community. a wonderful reputation for ourselves and the community, which we're very, very proud of. And we're so happy to bring this positive focus to our community. In the past two years, obviously, we've not been able to, we actually were doing a, we were presenting a production of Your Good Man, Charlie Brown, on the stage that featured a cast of adults, as well as a double cast of children, of teen actors, which had the luxury of performing for two weekends, and then everything went, you know, south. But that's okay. You know, we're theater people. We learn to survive. We learn to find, to problem solve. We've learned to do some other things to be able to support ourselves. I don't know if all of you realize this, but we also have many Actors Repertory Theater of Simi and the Simi Valley Cultural Association have developed free programs in the community for kids. We have a program called Spectrum Collaborative, which is for LGBTQ+ kids and their allies, which is totally free to the kids, which is a creative arts programs, that program that has mentors working with mentees in order to create a project in any area of the creative arts, which really is very uplifting for them and the community. We have another program called Literature in Action, which is a production, a play-based program, which is based in classic American and world literature that we do twice a year with teens. One is a Shakespeare, Shakespearean production. The other one is based in American literature, entirely free for high school kids between the ages of 13 and 18. In fact, we have a play on stage right now called Inherit the Wind, if you all know that show. Anyway, what we've done at the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center is to create a theater opportunity and community that is now 27 years old. We opened the theater with a production of Your Good Man, Charlie Brown, in 1995, and we have evolved into a full regional theater company, which has brought huge numbers of people into the community to participate in our productions and to really enjoy the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center, which is our home. In the past two years, obviously, we have not had that income, which supports our free programs for kids.
I have to.
Am I done? But that was fast. Anyway.
I was going to throw you the water to put on the red light.
Oh, I know, but I'm like, sorry, I will not take up any more of your time. I just am in favor of subsidizing the theatrical productions that happen at the Cultural Arts Center for the benefit of all the community and the children and everybody. So, thank you. I appreciate your time, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bruce Boyer.
I'm Bruce Boyer, and I'm candidate for Ventura County Clerk of Elections. And an interesting thing has come up that I want to thank the council for. As a registered Republican, I have my Democrat friends and neighbors that go, well, Bruce, you're going to be easy on them. I'm like, are you kidding? Talk to anybody on the Simi Valley City Council. I'm harder on you Republicans than anybody. So, I take you to task, but it is because I want the best. I want a clean game. I'm here again with my fellow Second Amendment supporters to talk to you in Simi Valley, and I apologize for coming late to miss the Pledge of Allegiance. But we all, as elected officials, as candidates, we take an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. And that means our First Amendment, our Second Amendment, and every single one of our Bill of Rights. Well, last time I spoke with you a week ago, I informed you that now 23 American states have restored to us, the citizens, our Second Amendment rights, because in those 23 states, you do not have to have a government permission slip to exercise your right to keep and bear arms. In the last 14 months, seven of those states have become constitutional carry states. No political movement in American history has moved like this. As I stand before you tonight, we are anticipating Indiana, Georgia, and Nebraska all coming on as constitutional carry. Americans are getting their rights back. We're not getting them back in Florida. Why not? Florida is a very, very Republican state. Because Republicans in Florida are not willing to restore our rights. That's what they're doing. They blocked it. And I make that comparison because here in Simi Valley, USA, this city council, five of you that all say the Pledge of Allegiance, regardless of your party affiliations, this is our Second Amendment. It is our right. This city council, we are asking that you, one, put as an agenda a public forum. Those who wish to say that Ruth Lou Evinos cannot be trusted to exercise her judgment as to whether she should or should not carry a firearm, I want them to come up and explain that. We want to know where our city council members, our candidates for city council, where do you stand? Are you with our liberty, or do you stand against it? Stand up for your Second Amendment, or sit down. But let's just make that clear. This city council can also agendize having Chief Livingston exercise the California law that allows him to issue concealed carry permits to every resident in Simi Valley. He doesn't have to defer to a sheriff. You can instruct him to do that. That is what we're asking you to do and to restore our rights with Second Amendment sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Pachowski.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. Before I get into the other points that I wanted to cover tonight, I wanted to congratulate the city on the beautiful new website that the city's put up. I think the old site was long overdue for a refresh, and I think the new site looks a lot better than the old one did. So, congratulations to the city on that. I wanted to talk tonight, though, about the council's priorities, because you're going to be addressing that later on in the evening. I think that as we look forward as a city, we cannot ignore the state of the city budget. The city budget has one big giant problem: unfunded pension liabilities. It threatens to bankrupt our city if it's not addressed. It's got to be the number one priority, one of the top priorities that we address as a city, if not the number one priority. Part and parcel with the city budget goes capital projects, because they come from the city, come as a result of the city budget. And I've had a handful of residents, John Lapper included, point out that the state of our roads is getting bad in the city. If you drive into Simi Valley on Madera Road, coming from Thousand Oaks, you can tell where Thousand Oaks ends and Simi Valley begins because of the state of the road, the state of the pavement on Madera Road, or Olson Road, whatever it's called at that particular point. So, I think we need to make sure that we're focusing on capital projects as well, most notably our roads. Now, then there's the engine that drives it all, and that's economic development. Because economic development brings more revenue to the city, more revenue to the city makes the budget a whole lot, a whole lot more feasible. So, those need to be three of the top priorities, in my opinion. There's one other thing that I think the city needs to take, take a strong consideration at and take a good, strong look at, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, and that's becoming a charter city. It may be true that the state of California has started to restrict a lot of the benefits of a charter city, but I don't necessarily believe that that's, that all of that's legal, because charter cities are protected by the California Constitution. It's there in the Constitution of the state of California. And so, I'm not so sure how well that's going to hold up if another city, or Simi Valley, were to challenge it in court. Anyway, that's my time for the night. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Greg Sefain.
Good evening, city council. My name is Greg Sefain, and I am the president of the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Foundation. I just wanted to speak today on the grants that you guys will be reviewing today, and just let you know that the foundation encourages you to support that item. But more so, I want you to think about a little bit more that the center, the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center, is really the foundation for arts in our city. And what this grant will allow us to do is to create more partnerships within the city and really start to rebuild the arts program, which has so desperately been decimated from the pandemic. And as you review that item today, I ask that you think about all the benefits that it will do to allow the arts to continue to be such a place in our community for kids of all ages and identities to be able to express themselves and be able to express what they love, which is acting, dancing, singing, all areas of arts. And that is really what the foundation urges you to support today, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the last speaker card.
No comments from me. Comments from the council. We'll start with Mike Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Boyer, for sticking around after your public comments. I addressed this twice already. The reason the Simi Valley does not ask our police chief to issue CCWs to citizens that apply for them is because we have a sheriff in town that does issue CCWs. And he has issued CCWs for his entire tenure. I know people that have gotten CCWs without a hangup, without a hiccup. Now, there may have been problems down the road for some people. I'm not sure, I don't know how that happened. They should just reapply.
Few things. First of all, thank you for those of you in the arts who came to articulate your support and concern. I agree with Mr. Penico, who stated, came from Thousand Oaks to tell us that it's a team. It certainly does bring out wonderful attributes for a team that works together, creating beauty. And so, thank you for all of those. And I know that we will be speaking at length about that item as far as offering grants. Wanted to also thank you, Mr. Pachowski, for noticing our website. It is lovely, and I know the people of the city have worked hard on it. And, Mr. Lapper, I have the best of intentions to get back to my social media postings, so I'll see what I can do to fix that.
Councilmember Lou Evinos, and I think we're getting our speakers back, so.
Yep. You're back on YouTube.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to just thank Mr. Lapper for coming and bringing up the issue of speeding. I know you're not the only resident that's been concerned about speeding on our streets, and that's obviously a safety issue, and, you know. So, thank you for bringing up all the issues that you brought up. I truly appreciate all the speakers who came tonight to participate. In addition, I want to thank Mr. Pachowski for bringing up the issue of economic development. You're absolutely right. That is the driving force. We cannot do anything without economic development in this city, and it's time that we have a plan and that we implement it, and that we think about the future before we do reach the point of bankruptcy over pensions and lack of revenues. So, thank you for bringing that up. As far as all the comments that came to, all the people who came to comment about the Cultural Arts Center and the grants, I reserve my comments, because we have limited time to respond for when we get to that agenda item. But thank you for coming.
Okay. And myself, I just want to point out that, and thank Joe Pachowski for mentioning the new website, but he kind of indicated that the council did it. And I want it to be known very clearly that at least I had nothing to do with it. The staff did a tremendous job, and they did it. And I, for one, want to thank staff for having a nice new website that meets the approval of Mr. Pachowski. So, thank you, staff, for that. That's my only comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item six, the consent calendar, and there are no city resolutions for your consideration this evening. May I request to pull consent item three?
Pull three? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the motion that we approve consent calendar with the exception of three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Call for the vote. Approve the consent calendar with the exception of number three.
The motion passes unanimously.
Questions on three?
I'm not sure who to direct my questions to. Is it to Mr. Gable?
Tony in the back wall.
All right. So, I have a couple of questions on this item. The first one is with regard to, on page one, but last paragraph, it talks about how we've extended this. So, this is the Fifth Amendment of our extending our contract with this company for audit services. So, I'm curious, because it says the audit for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 should be complete by the end of this month, March, but the extension will allow for any unforeseen reporting or follow-ups that could come up at a later date. It does not say any here, anywhere in this report, and I looked, is there any additional cost? Are we approving additional costs, or just the time that it takes to produce a report that we've already approved the funding for?
Mayor and councilmember Lou Evinos, no, there are no additional costs. I believe it says that in the staff report.
Okay, because I wasn't sure about that. It just said it was extended, and I didn't know if there was going to be an additional cost.
It's only in case there's any random loose ends after we finish the audit.
Okay, but we won't have to pay any more money?
No.
Okay. My second question is, I know we've been extending it and extending it, and I don't know if that's a function of the pandemic, or if we're looking for, you know, once this contract ends in three months, if this is approved tonight, are we going to put this out for bid? Or what is the plan? Because to have five extensions on a contract is a really long time, but I understand we also had the pandemic. So, can you explain to me why we keep having these extensions? Are we going to look at other vendors? Or, I mean, I am concerned about our budget. You know, can we save money? Is there someone that can do it more efficiently or effectively? Can you answer those questions?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually already drafted an RFP. It's going through the internal review process, and that should hit the streets in the next couple of weeks. And then, we'll go through that timeline and find out if we have a new auditor, or if this company ends up being the best qualified at the end of that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, a motion to accept consent three.
I saw move. Second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 8A, consideration of the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Performing Arts Recovery Grant Program. And David Yoshitomi and Anna Medina are here to present this item.
and Anna Medina are here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. The City Council approved the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center 2021 through 2025 Strategic Plan at the July 2021 meeting. The Strategic Plan identifies several tactics, one of which is the development of a COVID-19 Recovery Grant Program. This grant program would support artists and arts and cultural organizations impacted by COVID-19 by subsidizing the rental fees associated with producing their artistic performances and events at the Cultural Arts Center. The Arts Commission appointed an ad hoc committee to research and develop the grant program. The Arts Commission reviewed the ad hoc committee's proposal at its November 2021 meeting and recommended that the grant program be presented to the City Council for their review and approval. Due to the pandemic, the Cultural Arts Center was closed for approximately 18 months. Based on the reopening schedule, business need, and the anticipated needs of artists and arts organizations, the development of the CAC's Performing Arts Recovery Grant Program became a priority. The grant will provide immediate financial assistance to organizations and artists who have been without recurring revenue. Prior to COVID, the CAC's attendance averaged between 80 to 95 percent, depending on the musical. And since the reopening, the attendance has dropped to about 30 percent. The Cultural Arts Center Performing Arts Recovery Grant has two objectives. First, this program is designed to support the simultaneous recovery of the CAC and the Simi Valley arts community through providing a financial incentive to encourage rentals at the CAC. The second objective is to establish the Simi Valley Arts Commission as a granting organization for the purpose of qualifying for future funding opportunities from state and federal agencies. The grant program is designed to assist arts and educational organizations, artists, musicians, and other arts and dance groups with the fees to rent the CAC. Grant funding will range from $1,000 to $15,000 based on the duration of the rental. The grant program is modeled after other municipally-owned art facilities in the region that provide facility use grants, including the Thousand Oaks Bank of America Performing Arts Plaza and the Ojai Libby Bowl. In addition, the proposal incorporates much of the same eligibility criteria as the City of Simi Valley's Community Projects Grant. This program expands eligibility beyond 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations to include educational organizations and independent arts organizations and artists. This expanded eligibility is expected to attract new cultural, dance, and music performances. Performing Arts Recovery Grants are open to 501(c)(3) nonprofits, arts, or cultural organizations, independent artists and art groups, and educational organizations with a confirmed reservation for arts and cultural performances at the CAC for the 2022 and 2023 calendar year. Fiscal sponsorship is allowed, and the maximum award is $15,000. However, this amount can be reevaluated if additional funding is approved. Applicants must demonstrate a public benefit to the Simi Valley community on the grant application. Some examples include discount programs for Simi Valley residents, an educational component, an appeal to new audiences, or innovative outreach and engagement strategies that reduce common barriers to arts participation, such as income, disability, and race. Ineligible events include fundraising events, religious ceremonies, luncheons, meetings, private celebrations, and political and/or partisan events. Those wishing to apply for a Performing Arts Recovery Grant must complete an application. Questions are evaluated using a point system. This includes general organization information, such as mission statement, financial information, and verification of 501(c)(3) status, for a maximum of 10 points; organization or artistic history and COVID-19 impact, maximum of 30 points; a description of the project and benefits to the Simi Valley community, for a maximum of 40 points; a marketing plan, maximum 10 points; and a project budget, for a maximum of 10 points.
Thank you, Anna, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here to cover the application review process and go to the financial and funding structure of the grant. As far as the application review, applications will be accepted on a rolling basis. Cultural Arts Center staff will screen applications to determine initial eligibility. Eligible applications will then be forwarded to an ad hoc grant review committee of the Arts Commission, who will evaluate and rank grant applications. An applicant must score 75 out of 100 points to receive the grant. The initial funding of $75,000 for this grant will be sourced from the Cultural Arts Center operating reserve, stemming from a reimbursement of eligible 2020 to 2021 expenses from the shuttered venues operator grant. These funds must be utilized in a manner that supports the long-term sustainability of the Cultural Arts Center. If this grant is approved, staff will transfer $75,000 to the Cultural Arts Center's contingency and performance account. When grant credits are redeemed, staff will transfer the grant credit amount from the contingency and performance account to the operations account to track the progress or monitor grant activity. This will just be displayed as a credit for the renter at the time of reconciliation. City Council can consider an additional allocation to this funding of $75,000 when discussing disbursements of the American Rescue Plan Act at a future meeting, and the Arts Commission will receive a report on grant activity at each of their meetings. Accompanying this grant, we've developed a, or staff has developed, a robust outreach and marketing plan that combines city media assets, including social media, the website, Simi Valley Television, the newsletter, and as well as local media, and targeted emails to over 80 artists, arts, and multicultural organizations, and educational institutions. Word of the grant program has already generated interest from groups new to the Cultural Arts Center, including dance, theater, performing arts, symphony, and nonprofit cultural organizations. In terms of financial impact, staff estimates that this grant will have impact of Cultural Arts Center in three main areas. Supporting the Cultural Arts Center in meeting its 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 revenue projections; stabilize the financial situation of arts groups who wish to return to the center; as well as encouraging new renters and new business to the center; and increase future funding opportunities to the city by establishing the Arts Commission as a granting organization. In terms of the strategic plan alignment, the Performing Arts Recovery Grant supports two of the goals of the Cultural Arts Center Strategic Plan. Sustainability Goal 1, which is to safely reopen the Cultural Arts Center to full operational capacity, restoring revenue and facility use figures to at least 2019 projections by June 30, 2023; as well as Arts Leadership and Advocacy Goal Number 1, which is to reinforce the arts as a vital, integral, and necessary component of life in Simi Valley by strengthening local artists, arts organizations, and cultural groups through increased consideration and presence of arts in policy decisions and legislation. The Arts Commission is recommending that the City Council review and approve the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Performing Arts Recovery Grant Program with a grant period from April 1, 2022 through December 31, 2023. And this concludes our report, and we are available for any questions.
Okay, questions? Oh, yeah, I just had to get it on. I knew you two would be on there, I'm sure of that, and I couldn't find you.
You looked, I'm glad you looked the other way first. That's okay, we understand.
Councilmember Lou Evinos.
I have several questions. So, the goal of this is to, for long-term sustainment of the Cultural Arts Center. I'm very concerned, because I want to make sure that there's transparency and accountability, and I don't really see that here. I want to know how is this objective being measured? This is to encourage new audiences, that's in the staff report. And, you know, what I see being proposed and what I see that is, you know, you know, on there right now, it's not attracting new audiences. You know, are you going to do a poll of the, you know, the general public that is, you know, increasingly diverse in Simi Valley to ask them, you know, what is it that you would like to see? Because people are going back to the theater. I am one of them. I'm, I love the theater. I love the musical theater, live theater, but I don't see anything here that I want to go see. My kids don't see anything here that they want to see. It's nothing that appeals to them. And so, how do you attract new audiences if you keep having the same shows and the same type of shows? I don't see anything that has a representation of the diverse population here. I don't see anything with Latinos. I don't see anything with Asian population. I don't see anything with black actors and actresses. So, I would like to know, how are you encouraging these new audiences? So, that's my first question, and I have several more.
As far as the, that aspect, as far as how are we going to bring new audiences into the center, the application design will actually reward applicants that provide, let me go back to the slide here, that description of the project and benefits to the Simi Valley community. So, there's several different manners of that. There's a discount ticket program for Simi Valley residents that could include people that have not been able to afford the theater prior. Educational components, that could be arts education and bringing schools and other types of, you know, arts exposure types of programs, and appeal to new audiences. And again, this is for rentals, so it is up to the renter, but the renter can demonstrate on their application that this project would bring in new audience to the center because of its unique educational component, or because it presents something that has not been on the stage previously. And then, the last one on this was the innovative strategies that reduce common barriers to participation in the arts. So, that could be income, perhaps during a free show, disability. I know some art groups have discussed about doing certain sensory, sensitive productions where flashing lights and loud noises and those type of elements are left out of a production, so somebody who's sensitive to those elements would be attracted to that, as well as race and ethnicity, if there's something that is, one of the applicants proposes something that is more culturally relevant to a community that's not been represented at the center, that would certainly, it would be recognized and awarded on the grant application and then be, therefore be eligible for a grant.
So, how many, can you go back to the point designation? It's almost there, right there. So, I see the description of project and benefits to the Simi Valley community is 40 points. So, if they give a really good description, but they don't provide the benefits, like how much of that 40 points is? Because, again, I'm concerned with the fact that it's, it's, you know, it has to be something that attracts new audiences. Again, with the overall goal, right, is for long-term sustainability of a Cultural Arts Center. It's not the first time that I've said, you know, that the Cultural Arts Center needs to be self-sustaining and not rely on the general budget all the time, you know. It needs to be self-sustaining. And there are other theaters that have already opened that are already, you know, they're getting sponsors and they're filling the, you know, auditoriums. And it's because they have those diverse shows that people want to see, that other generations, younger generations want to go see. So, that's, I would like to see that be explicit in terms of not just the description of the project, but the benefits of the Simi Valley community. And there's, there are some ways that you can do that, that you can, you know, kill all the birds with one stone, because you can have, for example, I just took my students to a field trip to a play in Culver City, and they had one show that was just for students. So, we got to go for free as long as the schools provided the bus. The students that were Title I schools, low-income students, they got to go for free. And it was a show about an undocumented single mother and her teenage daughter, and everybody loved the show. It was amazing. So, but that's something that speaks to the next generation, that speaks to diversity in our city, and I want to make sure that that's explicit in there. I want to know how that's going to be, how is this data going to be gathered? You know, do we know who's attending that is attracting new audiences? Who's gathering this data? How will we know? Will that data be presented to the City Council and the public? And when will it be presented to us? Because I want to make sure that this money is effective. And if we find that it's effective, then I have no problem as a City Council saying, okay, we'll give more money to this program for the rental fees, but I want the data. I want accountability, I want transparency.
I think as far as the reporting goes, first, as far as the point structure goes, the description of the project and benefits to the Simi Valley community are the most heavily weighted point category on the grant review process. So, the grant applicant must clearly benefit, clearly demonstrate, number one, the project, a description of the project and what it entails, as well as what benefit it is bringing to the Simi Valley community. So, the, if the applicant does not sufficiently answer those questions, that question, it's actually, it's impossible for them to get the grant, because they do require a 75, a score of 75 or higher on the grant application. So, the crux of this application is questions number 2 and number 3, which gives you 70 points, and that's to demonstrate the, number one, the artistic history of the organization, or verifiable performance in history, how your organization or your artistry has been impacted by COVID, as well as a description of the project and benefits to the Simi Valley community. So, those two are the most heavily weighted questions, which if the applicant does not perform well on those, will not be eligible for a grant. But we do leave it up to the renters to complete an application and bring their ideas for performance to the center. So, this is very reliant on the artists and arts organizations. That's why we have a marketing plan and outreach plan to accompany this, so that the community develops these programs, and if they can demonstrate the benefit to the, to the community of Simi Valley, then they would be eligible for the grant and for this funding.
So, I guess, let me ask the question a different way. When we have distributed this money and all the grantees have gotten the funding, how will we know that we got our money's worth for the $75,000? Who's going to gather that data?
We can build the reporting metrics into the Arts Commission reports, who's receiving reports on grant activity, and we can include the specific elements on new audience members. The Cultural Arts Center just implemented a new box office system that I'm not 100% certain on all the capabilities, but should be able to track new residents by address and people that have visited the Cultural Arts Center before or have not. So, we can start building out, and that's, again, going to the objectives of the overall strategic plan, but to include better tracking of who's coming into the doors of the center, who's performing on stage, what type of activities are being offered, and then using that information to help build programs for the future.
And by the way, that's, I mean, I, just this weekend, my son came from Boston, and we went to two, you know, theater performances in Culver City and downtown LA, and both of them had, you know, little Scantron where you scanned it, and why did you come? Did you enjoy the show? Have you been here before? You know, would you like to be a supporter of the theater? And so, you know, it's not that difficult to come up with a Survey Monkey, you know, that someone scans and that we can gather that data. But I want to make sure that if we're spending money, that we do so effectively, and that if we're going to continue to give money from the general budget to the arts, and I'm a huge supporter of the arts, I'm, I'm an art teacher, I was a theater minor, I was a musician, I still am, so huge proponent of the arts. However, I want to make sure we're getting our money's worth. I want to make sure the taxpayers are getting the money's worth. So, can that be implemented in that?
Yes, we can certainly intend on implementing a very robust tracking system to monitor not only the types of performances on the center, but who is the audience, and also audience satisfaction. And I believe the Cultural Arts Center, as part of its new box office program, has developed a survey, an audience response survey that says, how was, how was, what were your thoughts on the program and what else would you like to see immediately as you leave the center?
Hey, let's move on, let someone else have the floor. Elaine Lipster.
I have one more question later, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I'd like to just quickly respond to some of the things that Councilmember Evinos is saying, because I'm a little bit surprised with some of her comments, because I just think this is an excellent grant program. A few things I want to be sure that we are not losing sight of. First of all, this is designed to help those artists who have been decimated with COVID, who've not been able to perform, et cetera, and this is a way to help them get back on the stage. And so, I want to be sure we keep in mind that this is COVID recovery-based. And secondly, this is coming not from the general fund, but specifically coming from the shuttered venues grants, which has already been received, which has been earmarked specifically to help generate, rejuvenate that theater. So, I just, those, I mean, I'm, I'm surprised with her concerns. But the third thing to address, if I didn't miss it, did you not state that we already have three new entities who've never performed there before, who have applied to, already to perform? Is that, was that a statement that I read in the report?
Yes, yes. It's already generated interest. I believe one of the people were here, which was Paul from Pinnacle Productions, and then, do you have a list here?
I think we're sufficient to say that. I think we're sufficient to say that you have new applicants.
No, and that's all right. Absolutely. Yeah, that's fair enough. You don't need to come to this. And I know that I'm meeting with someone this week as well, who's never performed there, that would love to be performing there. And I think your metrics make sense. My question was going to be, I think it's important, of course, this is about recovery, but the second part that you made is that it establishes the Arts Commission as a granting organization. And I know I'm fortunate to serve on that Cultural Arts Commission. So I think I have an understanding of what that means. But David, you explained very well in our previous meeting, what that means, what that could mean for us if we were established, if we looked to be a granting organization, what that could mean for us.
Yes, so broader regional, like Western, West staff is an arts organization, as well as the National Endowment for the Arts. And sometimes the California Arts Council will give funds to regional areas and local cities, municipalities, to support arts, arts communities there. Oftentimes, eligibility to receive those funds would be a demonstrated history of existing as a granting organization, meaning that you're reviewing and approving grants to distribute among the arts community. So what essentially this would do is be to start the clock. If this program were to move forward, it would start the clock and establish the Arts Commission. As the Arts Commission is the reviewing body for these applications, would essentially be day one of the Arts Commission as a granting organization, which down the line, would not be immediate, but I would say within three years, pending any, or no changes in eligibility from the NEA, the Arts Commission would be able to apply for a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts to redistribute to Simi, to the Simi Valley community.
So to put it in simple terms, because we've shown our support for the arts in our community by providing grants to art, to struggling artists, then potentially the National Endowment for Arts and other organizations would say, we want to give you more money because you are supporting the arts.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. $75,000 is the ask right now. And I know there's, there's discussion beyond that in future conversation. How quickly do you anticipate those funds would be distributed?
You know, it is hard to say. The rental activity has been a little bit slow. But traditionally, the Cultural Arts Center receives about, between $85,000 to $100,000 in rental revenue a year. So I'd imagine within the first year, if the uptake on this program is quick, the first year would be expended, the first $75,000 would go pretty quickly.
Okay, very good. And I just want to make it clear. I saw Spitfire Grill. It was phenomenal. And I can't wait to go see Gentleman's Guide to Murder and Love?
Love and Murder, yes.
Ah, I got it backwards. Love comes first. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of the questions that I had, or comments I had, were Mayor Proton Lipton covered those, and the fact that these are not general fund monies, these are actually monies from the ARPA funds and such, and need to be used specifically to help our Cultural Arts Center get back on its feet. I actually had the pleasure of sitting in on the meeting when this was first discussed with the commission, and that was my first time sitting there. And it was very interesting, and they did a great job. And the commission knows what needs to be done to get the Performing Arts Center back up and running. Right now, people need a boost. They need that little bit of help to get them up and going and to get the, and to get the attendees back in the theater. So I think by doing these grants and offering them, that will really help us get everything back to, we were just hitting great strides when the pandemic hit. I mean, we were booked every weekend. You know, everything was just going great. And then unfortunately, it backfired and we had the pandemic. So the report you did was very good. I thought it was very thorough, gave a good explanation of what we're trying to do here. And I believe our commission has the experience to reiterate and to pick out the applications that will best fit the needs and the wants of our community. And I just wanted to say that I thought this was a great idea. So congratulations to both of you.
There you go. Now I can say uh again. I'd like to say that my time serving on the commission, I think, opened a lot of windows. And we saw areas to improve. And the CAC has improved. And of course, we hit a wall when the pandemic came. And no one could have predicted that or avoided it. So no fault of the CAC or anybody that works there, that, that there was a pandemic and things had to shut down. I do want to say, if you look at the commission right now, and we've had some discussions on this dais, and when you see this grant process, you see the importance of putting people on the commission that absolutely understand what they're doing, why they're doing it, and what have you. So I just want to say real quick, the importance of having quality people that know the process is a very important thing. So it can't be, in my opinion, rubber stamp, let anybody on. Because now it's becoming where they're going to have much more responsibility to keep things going and get us back to where we were, which I think the group is there right now, but remembering that it hasn't always been that way. So I think it's great what staff came up with. I want to see it move forward. And I think it'll be very helpful to the CAC. And we're going to see a lot of activity there in probably a short while, based on this kind of help from the city. So thank you. Councilmember Lou Avinos.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several more questions, if you don't mind. I'd like to know if, will we, will we know, well, first, I'd like to respond to the mayor's comments. It is important to put people on the commission. That's why I've asked several times to be on the commission. As the only, as the first and only woman of color on this city council, and a growing part of the population in Simi Valley, and someone who's a theater minor, I definitely understand the process. I definitely would have liked to have participated. And it would have been valuable to have a Latina on the commission that would have been able to give input as to what Latino families and families that are diverse, that live and reside in Simi Valley and spend money, would have wanted to see. So unfortunately, this city council did not grant me the opportunity to be a part of that. Those national endowment funds, FYI, most of them are with regard to, and I know because we've applied, have a criteria of addressing issues of diversity and low-income students and low-income audiences. And so that's a component of that. So you can have a granting commission, but if you do not meet the criteria of the National Endowment or the California Endowment, of meeting those diverse needs, and it does say in the staff report, I just want to point out, it does say diverse audiences, appeal to new audiences, or innovative outreach. And then it says income, disability, and race to arts participation. So it's not with regard to having more different companies that are applying for the grants. If there's money, people are going to apply. It's with regard to new audiences. And that's what I was getting at, and that's what I was asking for. I would like to know, is there going to be, will you, whoever the commission is, or whoever's this ad hoc committee that determines who gets this funding, the $75,000, will we know ahead of time what shows they're going to do? Because I didn't see that in the application. Or like, will they say, hey, these are the shows that are going to appeal to new audiences? Or is it just the organization that's getting the funding?
It will be a description of the specific show. So if, it would be, if it was a cultural dance group that was coming, they would say that this is, this is our cultural dance, this is what we've done, this is our performance history. And in addition to this, we're going to be opening this to the low-income youth in Simi Valley. So it'd be specific, the grant application specifically asks what type of project. And the applicant, in their response, would have to write a fairly detailed description of the project. If somebody were to just put a complete, we're going to do a musical on stage, and it's going to be great, they would not receive the 40 points.
Okay, so they would have to just give a description, or know, like, hey, these are productions we plan on doing with this money?
Yes, and it'd be specific for, to a certain performance run. So it would not be to an organization, it's more towards a project. So this is, although it is a facility use grant, it is project-based, meaning that we are asking for a description of the project. And these grant funds would go to support a certain project, not an organization, per se.
Okay. And then I just have one more question. In page two of your report, it states that the approval is only, does not include outside expenses. So it can't be used, it's only to be used for the rental space. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's almost like a sponsorship of the, hey, you're not going to have to pay for the rental space. And you can't use the money for, to pay individual artists outside expenses, it says. You can't pay production licensing fees, artist fees, director, choreographer, lighting designer, set designer fees, marketing expenses. And I was concerned about that because it says in here, marketing expenses is included in those outside expenses. But you said they have to have a marketing plan. So are the applicants aware, or will it be made very clear? Because I would hate for us to violate the boundaries of this funding. And you mentioned they have to give us a marketing plan. I just want to make sure it's clear to the applicants that the money is only used for rental space, and it can't be used for marketing expenses. Because if you're asking them what their marketing plan, they may expect that some of that money can be used for that. Does that make sense?
Yes, certainly. And the application will be very specific as far as the criteria on how the funds can be applied. And the question in regards to the marketing plan is to make certain that, again, that if they are bringing this wonderful project to the Cultural Arts Center, that they have a plan to support and attract the audiences that they believe they can bring to the center.
And I'm glad that you think the money's going to be spent in a year, but I do have a question with regard to that. It says, grant awardees can apply any remaining balance to a future rental through the 2023 season. If, if they don't spend that money, what happens with it?
It would be held over for a future rental. And if they didn't redeem that money, that's something that could be brought before the Arts Commission to review as far as fund balances. The tiers, the different tiers for the $1,000 to $15,000 are basically, are based on the expected rental fees expenses for the center based on a weekend performance versus a five-week run theatrical performance. So the general idea is that if I have a one, one weekend performance, that I would exhaust the entirety of that $1,000. However, in the event that it doesn't, maybe perhaps it's a low technical needs performance, that money can be carried, carried over by that organization for a future rental. Or if they don't redeem that, we could certainly look, refer this back to the Arts Commission for a recommendation on how to distribute the remainder of the funds, or what to do with them.
But would that money have to be spent by December 31, 2023? Because that's what we're voting on. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, it would. Well, by the organization, as far as renting the center. Certainly, if the Arts Commission and then city council would want to extend that, we could look at that as well. Again, we designed the tiers to be exhaustive, so that if I, if we are doing a five-week run at the center and receive a $15,000 grant for this, that at the end of that time, for the most part, that $15,000 would be a credit towards a larger expense in rental fees.
And for $5,000, they have to be a non, or more, right? They have to be a nonprofit, or partner with a nonprofit. So does the nonprofit also have to meet the applicant criteria?
Yes. Well, the nonprofit will have to be an established 501(c)(3) organization, and then would essentially act as a fiscal sponsor for the project coming through.
Okay, so but, but if they partnered with a nonprofit, right? They said, hey, we want $10,000. We're partnering with a nonprofit. Does the nonprofit also have to meet the criteria on the application?
Well, the, yes, certainly. The, if, coming in under fiscal sponsorship, the organization, the project would be applying under the nonprofit's 501(c)(3) status. So that, that organization, that 501(c)(3) would have to meet all of the requirements of the grant. So if it essentially, that project gets absorbed into the nonprofit for the purposes of applying for this grant. And any funds and all of that is tracked through the nonprofit organization.
Okay, thank you so much.
I move to approve the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Performing Arts Recovery Grant Program, with the grant period beginning April 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2023.
Second?
Motion and second call for the vote.
Councilmember Lovinos? The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on agenda is item 8B, Discussion and Direction Regarding City Council Goals and Priorities. And City Manager Gabler is presenting this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're going to have a discussion tonight on goals and priorities. In your staff report before you, we look back at the 2019 discussion of the city council on goals and priorities. And at that meeting, the council identified 17 different items that the council felt were of interest and importance to the city council. We wanted to give you an update on each one of those, of where those items stood, although they may not have been identified as top priorities. They have not been forgotten, and the city, and the city has continued to work on all of those items moving forward. For tonight's discussion, we are having presentations by several departments, each one of our departments. We're going to start off with a presentation by our Public Works Department. After that will be the Police Department. After that is Environmental Services, and then Administrative Services. And lastly, the City Manager's Office, covering economic development. The intention behind these presentations is to provide information to the city council on the status of, of the items that the, these departments deal with. Primarily, traditionally, I should say, the city councils, this and past, have identified several consistencies in what their prior, goals and priorities are. That includes economic development, fiscal strength of the city, public safety, and affordable housing. We're adding into that because there has been a lot of discussion, and even tonight, on public infrastructure. So we wanted to make sure the council was updated on some of the things that we're doing. In terms of the public infrastructure, we, as was mentioned earlier, we've allocated $5 million to Streets and Roads through the ARPA money. We'll be coming to you next month with some additional funding opportunities to bolster that. And Mr. Fuchiwaki will cover some of the needs of that money in his presentation. So with that, I want to start the presentations and allow the city council to absorb that information. And we can have general discussion and questions as we go through. So without any questions, we can, Mr. Mayor, we're ready to start the presentations, if you like.
Okay.
Hey. Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and council members. Yes, we are going to talk about major streets tonight. And I want to thank Councilmember Kavanaugh and Joe Picharsky for being my lead-in act. Also tonight, with regards to capital projects, is Joe Deacon, our assistant director, and Ben Gonzalez, our deputy director overseeing Simi Valley Transit. As you know, Public Works provides the basic services to the businesses and residents of Simi Valley, including water, sewer, transit, and streets. However, this evening, I'd like to concentrate on our capital project, capital improvement program for the various funds. So every year, the city council adopts a capital, five-year capital improvement program that includes funds for various divisions, or funds throughout the Public Works Department. So this year, we're looking at about $30 million plus change for various projects in Public Works. One of the first projects that I'd like to mention is the PSC Building Repair. We are estimating the completion of the interior at the end of March, move-in in April, and the estimated exterior completion in April as well. Unfortunately, this project's been delayed a little bit as a result of encountering some unexpected building deficiencies that needed to be mitigated. Unlike, you know, very much like any of anybody's home improvement plan, it never goes as smoothly as you want. So hopefully, we'll have everybody back in the building in April. So in sanitation, the city council often awards contracts for sewer lining projects to rehabilitate our sewer lines throughout the city. We have approximately 300 to 400 miles of sewer lines. And I thought I'd show a couple of pictures of how this is done, if you haven't been there. And basically, it's a lining that goes in to the manhole and gets pushed through the manhole. And then steam will set, it's a combination of felt and resin, and steam will set the tube. Here's the tube going down into the manhole, and then it gets pushed up the sewer line, and then gets expanded and by And then it gets pushed up the sewer line and then gets expanded by steam and cures the resin that's in the lining. But before we go into the sewer line, obviously, we need to clean it, clear it, and inspect it to make sure that the product, the lining product, will adhere properly to the pipe. And this is some of the equipment you might see out in the streets when we're doing a lining project. Basically, the wastewater comes down the sewer line. It gets picked up by the equipment here, gets bypassed through the work area, and then dumped back into the main line further down the road. So in Water Works, we also maintain water pumps, pump stations. We maintain our water lines. This is a picture of our Big Sky Pump Station that will pump water up to the tanks up in the Big Sky area. And as a reminder, Water Works District Number Eight serves about two-thirds of the city, and the Golden State Water Company serves about one-third of the city. Included in the capital projects for Water Works is water tank rehabilitation projects. This is a recently completed project up in the Box Canyon area, the Box Canyon Tank. Here you see the nice shiny new tank on the left. And I've never been inside or seen the inside, but on the photo on the right, that's the inside of a tank. Of course, we don't leave the scaffolding in there when we put the water in. So in transit, we continue to upgrade our bus stop areas. We go from the lonely bench out on the street and install a modern solar-powered bus bench and shelter. This one in particular happens to be the south side, Arringer Road, east of Royal Avenue. We did a similar project on the north side, and these two bus stops serve the Free Clinic on Royal Avenue. At the Transit Maintenance Facility at the PSC, we're upgrading our CNG facility to include additional safety measures as well as a fast-fill CNG pump. In addition, we just recently completed the paving of the transit parking lot. As you can see, we've removed all of the old deteriorated asphalt, bring in a whole new layer of brand-new asphalt. Even though this isn't a capital project, I thought I'd slip in some information about ridership during the pandemic. As you can see, pre-pandemic in 2019, our numbers were pretty strong, and we're slowly recovering, but, you know, we're only about halfway of where we used to be pre-pandemic. So the primary point of our discussion tonight is streets and roads projects. As you can see, the streets and roads category includes the major minor streets, slurry seal and crack seal for streets, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and a variety of other projects and programs. Funding for streets and roads come from a variety of sources. Gas tax, specifically SB 1, CDBG, traffic impact fees, development fees. Occasionally, we get some county, state, and federal grant monies, but largely, streets and roads is funded by the general fund. Tonight, you approved a contract for minor streets to be funded by our CDBG program. This is a project from last year, I believe, in the Bridle Path area. You can see we go through again and remove all of the deteriorated asphalt and then bring in new asphalt and get a brand-new surface. So major streets funding is our biggest shortfall for the Streets and Roads program. Between 2010 and '11, up to present, there were six years of our capital projects that we had no funding for major streets. Some other reasons for the funding shortfall included the recession, loss of CDA funding, and limited federal highway funding available. However, recently, as indicated, the City Council approved $5 million of ARP funds for this year. But unfortunately, we're going to need more to just get to the worst streets in the city. Here's a current list of some of our priority projects totaling $13.5 million. I would like to note that the Madera Road project, actually, we have funding through the Highway Infrastructure Program allocated through the Ventura County Transportation Commission. So that does not include any general fund dollars. But typically, the rest of the approximately $12 million generally is general fund money. So this summer, we're planning to do the minor streets you just approved. We're also doing another minor streets project in midsummer. We are currently out to bid for the Coquen Street Overlay between Tapo Canyon Road and Sequoia Avenue. Some of you have been looking forward to that one. That one is currently out to bid and should start construction in early June, shortly after school is out for the summer. We're also going to do Stern Street Overlay and a Sycamore Drive Overlay. And in addition, we've got our Madera Road Overlay from Royal to Strathen Place that will be overlaid as well. That particular stretch is in pretty bad shape. I'm sure if you've driven it, you've seen all the black patches, the black lines, and the various temporary repairs that we've made throughout the years. If additional funding becomes available next summer and fall, we'll be looking at First Street, Arringer Road, a portion of Los Angeles Avenue, and another portion of Madera Road. This would be done next summer, and construction would probably start next summer or fall of 2023. I figured I'd add a little information with regards to typical project timelines. At the beginning of the fiscal year, when we know what projects have been funded, we start our process. Typically, the process begins with, obviously, the design of the approved projects. Another quarter or several months takes for the preparation of bid packages. We get the bids, evaluate the bids received. We come to council with a word of contracts. And typically, construction starts almost a year later in the summer. And that's the best time, obviously, for asphalt projects is to conduct them in the summertime. So in closing, it's always great to see appreciation of the community after our project's completed, and we happened to catch this on somebody's garage. So that concludes our presentation, and I and Joe and Ben are available if you have any questions.
Elaine Lutzner.
I'm sorry. Why is summertime the best time? Is it because of the heat and the curing process? Why can't we do this year-round, I guess is what I'm asking?
Well, when you lay out asphalt, it has to be at a certain temperature and maintain a certain temperature for quite a while. So in the winter, when it's too cold, for example, I don't know about this winter, but when it gets down below, I think it's 60 or 65 degrees. And when you're doing major streets typically in the evening hours to minimize traffic, the asphalt doesn't spread properly, and it might not cure properly. So summertime with the heat is, spring, summer is the best time for paving asphalt.
It's also done to avoid the school year. So we're trying to avoid.
I understand the school year thing. I guess I just would love to see it extended. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I've got a quick comment. Ron, I saw in the consent calendar where I think a bid went to Toro.
Yes.
First, I'd like to say I know no one at Toro. Never sat in their trucks, never gotten a glass of water from them, absolutely no connection whatsoever. But when I drive the streets that are repaved, they do a tremendous job.
Yes, Toro has been a good contractor for us. They are able to get several of our contracts over the last several years. So they are a very reliable contractor for our city projects.
And they're Ventura County, too, which is also a plus.
Yes, throughout Ventura County. And I think I've seen some contracts awarded even in Los Angeles County.
And so if I, I'm sorry, so if I just understand the totals, it was 13 million is what we need right now for major streets. Was that your total?
That was simply major streets.
And we right now have allocated $5 million right now to make.
That's right.
Okay, just want to get that out there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Ron. We'll go to the next speaker so we can get through these.
Next department up is Chief with the Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present for you an overview of the Police Department and our future, kind of look down the horizon, and some of the things that have been going on as well to keep you up to date. So we're going to go through our presentation here. I started out with our mission statement because I think it's really important. This is something that we, you know, came together as an organization to put together, like a lot of organizations do with a mission statement. And in the process of this, last year, this was posted throughout the Police Building and posted to all the different Bureau managers and the different bureaus. And it's something that, you know, we take great pride in. And, you know, we try to exude every day that we come to work. So I thought I would start out with a mission statement so that you would see just kind of the overview of what we stand for and, you know, the level of service that we try to, you know, produce for the community. One of the things that everybody always asks me about is crime. And that's a big thing, and public safety is a big part of that. So I thought I would just kind of give you a recap of where we're at right now, where we've come from, and what I see down the horizon of what we can expect. As you know, we look at Part I crimes, and those are homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, theft, auto theft, and arson. Those are the ones that are tracked by the FBI and the ones that we report every year that is put into a report that puts together our crime rate. So we had slight increases during 2020, and there's a variety of reasons for that. I think some of that had to do with the pandemic and having more people at home. We did see, unfortunately, an increase in domestic violence during 2020. But in 2021, as things started to, you know, kind of balance out a little bit, we did have a 10% overall decrease across the board in crime. So that was a, you know, returning back to what I would consider our gradual downward trend in crime really over the last 20 years. I know I've been with the Police Department 34 years now. And I know when I first started and went out in the field in patrol, we had 3,700 Part I crimes the first year that I worked. In 1996, as, by way of comparison, you know, everybody always talks about Simi Valley being the safest city, and that ranking has a lot of, it's a loaded ranking for a lot of reasons. And, but when you look at that, the last time we were designated one of America's safest cities was 1996, and in 1996, we had 2,435 reported Part I crimes. So if you look at, you know, where we went from 2016, just over the last, you know, few years, you know, we've kind of fluctuated, but we're trending downward. And we have been trending downward, you know, outside of a year or two here and there, we go back to this trend downward. One of the things to look for on the horizon in 2022, the department, as well as all the departments, are going to, you know, transform from the Part I crimes to what's called NIBRs, or the National Incident-Based Reporting System. And this is going to give us a broader picture of crime than the Part I reporting system. Because Part I reporting system doesn't talk about misdemeanors. It doesn't talk about things of that nature. So it's going to be a more comprehensive look at crime. And so I'm really looking forward to that. We're already in compliance with this, and our records department is already keeping these records for all these so that we can kind of look at where we're going to be for 2022 and going forward. So one of the things we're doing, too, right now currently is we haven't had a strategic plan that we, you know, since probably about 2018, 2019. And we've kind of hit all of our benchmarks. So we are now right in the middle of a process of, you know, upgrading our strategic plan for the next three to five years. And so these are the focus areas of our strategic plan. Number one on that priority is community policing because I think that's really what we stand for. The second thing is transparency, and I would add accountability to that because that's an important part of maintaining the trust with the community. Obviously, community safety is the business that we're in, so that includes crime. It also includes traffic and a variety of different areas that we would look at to how we would judge our community to be safe. Staffing is a big part of that, you know, maintaining adequate staffing levels to do the programs and to carry out the different enforcement programs and also community safety programs that we have to administer. Training is a big part of that. Again, trying to make sure that our officers and all of our staff get the best training that's available out there. Same with equipment. And then I added in their wellness, and that's an important thing that people often forget. You know, we send police officers out to a variety of things, you know, that involve grief counseling and things like that. And, you know, they, you know, they wear that on their sleeves sometimes. And so we have to have programs in place that can deal with officer wellness. So we have a robust peer support program, and we also have a chaplain program. And I think it's critical. You know, there were 20 of our officers that responded to borderline incidents. So, you know, they see a lot, you know, on a day-in-and-day-out basis. And so keeping, you know, keeping them well and having those services available for them is important. On the pictures here, you just see some of the, you know, different images here of our community policing, you know, interacting with the community in different ways. Also, I have a body camera up there because that's part of our transparency and accountability approach. The other thing is, in terms of staffing, or in terms of equipment, we're going to need to look at body cams again. We're two years into the program, which is hard to believe, and we're three years out. So I want, I'm having the staff right now look at equipment, things like body cameras. Where are we going to be in the next five years? What are we going to need to do to, you know, continue that? So the next one here. I really want to talk about community policing a lot tonight because we have really shifted the department and its structure and organization to really implement these programs in the best way that we can. We created a community policing bureau in January. And, you know, we had a variety of these programs before, but they weren't under one unified command. So obviously, you have different competition for resources and staffing. The Community Policing Bureau is going to, it's got a commander, and it's got a sergeant, and it now brings in all of our different resources. So we have created neighborhood resource officers. Each is assigned to an individual neighborhood council. This officer position, or what we call NROs, because in policing, we like to talk in acronyms a lot. But they're a hybrid of our homeless liaison officers and our former community liaison officers. And their goal is to really go out there and try to address these issues in a community-based way. You know, I often talk about this in terms of, you know, the Fire Department. If all they had to do was put out fires, they would probably be out of a job very quickly because of building codes and things like that. And for police, we have to be flexible, and we have to look at ways that we can, you know, address these problems that go beyond just what traditionally, you know, involve, you know, arrest and prosecution. So that's what they're to do. Under the Community Policing Bureau as well, we have, and we have the first ever in the county, a vulnerable population detective. And this detective, three days a week, has a behavioral health clinician in the field with them when they respond out to these different calls. They help our homeless population. They also go out and they deal with mental health issues. As you know, that's a big issue within our country right now. And so we're trying to find different creative ways of, you know, handling those problems that go beyond law enforcement. So working with a clinician from behavioral health is something that I really value. And I think, you know, bed space, trying to find places where we can get people to help is always a challenge. But I think it's a unique approach because, you know, the vulnerable population detective actually can write conservatories and different types of specialized civil warrants that can help get people into the, into programs that can get them reintegrated back into services. So it's using our law enforcement training to, you know, address problems in a more, you know, long-term rather than short-term. Under the community policing is also our school resource officers. And one of the things I'm also proud of is that we're returning the parent project, which is a 10-week program that started here in SVPD back in 2008. And this project deals with parents that have problems with kids that are, you know, on that verge of, you know, committing crimes. And we bring them into this course where they work with officers, but they also work with counselors and different people that we bring into it. And it's, you know, it's a 10-week program, and it gives them different solutions that they can handle so it doesn't involve having the police come out when there's an issue going on. It was very successful. It was cut a number of years ago for budgeting. And so, again, we're bringing it back now that we have this community policing bureau to. It was cut a number of years ago for budgeting and so again, we're bringing it back now that we have this community policing bureau to do that. One of the other things that we do is the pathways program and this is placing officers in schools to teach. And Officer Jay King does that at Royal High School right now. It's in its initial stages, but again, this is a way to talk to young people and get out there and have them interact with police in a different, in a different format. Also, we're going to continue our police community forums, you know, which we do quarterly and it's a way for the community to ask us questions about a variety of topics. We usually come up with a topic that the community, you know, promotes to us or proposes. And, you know, we, we discuss it and we bring department experts to answer their questions. Media and press relations are going to be handled by this bureau as well. And part of the public relations, you know, aspect of this too is doing, again, doing things that don't always involve enforcement. So Coffee with a Cop, Heroes and Helpers, where we, we take, you know, families out shopping during the Christmas season. The trunk or treat event that we did during the pandemic, you know, to give people a drive-through event that they could still do, you know, during the lockdown. So these are really important ways of, of the department interacting with the community in different ways than what would be traditional. So what are some of the results? How is it working so far? Well, you know, obviously, one of the things that we're trying to do here is really engage, you know, with what we call consumers with services. So arrest in, from the vulnerable population detective and from our NROs is usually a last resort, okay? It's, it's an ongoing process that involves casework. You know, our vulnerable population detective carries a caseload, working with this clinician from behavioral health, and also collaborating with local county, state, and local nonprofits as well. So, you know, obviously, the Samaritan Center is a big part of that. We work closely with them. As a result, our officers have helped many people. I mean, I can't even tell you how many people, you don't hear about them because they're not in the news. And we get them through the complicated social services process and we're reducing the need to incarcerate them, which in most cases actually further complicates the problem rather than resolves, like I said, what's ultimately a, a social problem. And I've always said, you can't arrest your way out of this and, and that's only going to make matters worse sometimes. You know, sometimes you don't have a choice. There's a crime committed and it demands that, you know, someone be prosecuted. But ultimately, you know, when, when, you know, homeless people are given citations and things like that and it's solving the problem maybe, maybe for half the day, but, you know, it's complicating it worse because now they, they get fines and things like that and it just adds up. And so the system kind of lets them down. So having these other ways of trying to address these problems, I think, is a better way. It gets us longer-term solutions and means we have to spend less staff time on these individuals. The other thing I'm proud of is we've produced the highest number of mental health crisis intervention team referrals in the county. This was pointed out to me by the County Behavioral Health recently. So our staff is working closely with behavioral health, which is an important part of it because we can't do it on our own. And we're getting these people that are ultimately in crisis to help they need. And again, like I, I can't emphasize it enough, arrests are a short-term solution. They do help in some cases, but these are complicated issues and they can make matters worse in the long run. All of our officers, including myself, are certified crisis, in crisis intervention through behavioral health. We have the best track record in the county right now for personnel that have gone through this program. So I think it's really something that sets us apart from other agencies. School Resource Officer Program has always been something that we've done here in Simi Valley and it still produces great results. You know, it's a valuable asset to our student population. And one of the things is, is that contrary to what you see a lot in the news media about it, our SROs are handling, handling a variety of problems on campus, you know, which means that we can keep officers out in the field that would otherwise have to respond to schools. You, you can't really, you can't really measure that. You know, the SROs are approachable. Most of you know Gene Colado, but also Glenn Ellis. They develop long-lasting relationships with students and they build trust between the community and the department. You know, they can handle things, they, they oftentimes hear about a fight before it's going to happen and they can de-escalate it and, and get to the bottom of it beforehand and bring people together to talk it out. They also do something that we don't hear a lot about and that's thankfully, we don't hear a lot about it because they conduct these complex threat analysis investigations. So whenever there's a statement in person between students or that shows up on social media threatening violence or something of that nature, they get involved in it. They set the students aside, they follow up on it, they go talk to the parents. They find out if there's any weapons registered in, in the family and they often prevent or de-escalate these problems before they get to the level of something. So I think that's invaluable. You know, I, I get a call every week from, from Officer Colado about situations that he's, that he's dealing with that don't rise past his level and I think that's very valuable and I, you know, it's a, it's a valuable program in that respect. These are just some of the pictures to share with you. You know, again, you know, interacting with kids at a young age and in the schools where they see the officers in a way that is not, you know, in an enforcement capacity or in a negative capacity. They see they're human beings like everybody else. And it gives the officers, you know, you know, positive, you know, interaction with the community as well. There you see Officer Travis White, who was one of our homeless liaison officers out, you know, dealing with people out in the field. Again, oftentimes it is to just get them the help that they need and they can solve those problems without an arrest. These are some of the other programs. That's Officer Jay King there. You know, again, every, every effort we get to humanize our officers, to interact in, in this kind of non-confrontational way with the community, we value that. You can see there, there during Christmas, using the Bearcat and members of our SWAT team and our, our public relations team out delivering presents. You know, doing things like that. Again, it's good for the officers. They see the community in a different light. The community sees the officers in, in a different light. And I think that's, you know, fundamentally important for community relations. The other thing I'm really proud of is our, our staffing and where we've come at. Now, we're facing some challenges right now for a variety of reasons. At the beginning of 2021, we were close to full staff. We've never been completely fully staffed since I've, I've been here. But we're currently short now 16 officers and this is due to service retirements, officers leaving the state for economic and family reasons, and really due to the nationwide shortage of candidates who choose law enforcement as a career. As you can imagine, it's not something right now, a lot of people look at and say, that's, you know, what I want to do. It's a big responsibility. That being said, you know, we're competing with all the other agencies in our county right now for candidates. And so we have to, you know, go above and beyond to try to, you know, market the department and show them why it's, it's better to work here than other places. Our department is, you know, getting better in terms of its diversity and that's something we're working at. Our current demographics, you can see there on, on the slide. One thing I'm really proud of is that we have more Spanish speakers than we've ever had in our history and we have, you know, speakers of a variety of different Asian languages. We also have more female officers than we've ever had in the department's 50-year history. And so again, we need more. And so we're out there trying to, trying to work on that and, you know, do things. One of the things that we have coming up planned is a, we're having a seminar for women who want to get into law enforcement and it's specifically directed towards women to show them what different things are. We benefit from having a diverse department. And currently, again, like I said, we have more women and we have really the most ethnically diverse management team in the department's history. So I think it's, it's something to be proud of. And, and again, the goal is, is just to really have the department reflect the community that we serve. This is a recent picture that's showing all of the women we have right now. They do everything in the department. You know, we, we had a woman on motorcycle. We've had members on SWAT team. You see one of our officers there who's a drill instructor at the Police Academy. You know, again, you, it's, it's something, it, it, you know, for a department our size, it's a, it's a big milestone and I'm, I'm really proud of it. Last but not least, emergency management. You know, this is a big part of community safety. And right now, we're working together with our county partners on the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. We're in Phase One. The community can go look at that. I believe through March 23rd, it's available for public comment. And you can get, get to the plan through readyventura.org. We have a new emergency services manager here, Randy White. As many of you know, retired a few years ago, but we have Eileen Connors, who comes to us from the private sector, from Disney. And she is, you know, single-handedly running things and, you know, meeting people and working with other, our partners in the county. So we're very lucky to have her bringing that, she has that private sector perspective. And she's just a positive person and she's done a lot for us in the short time that she's been here. She's presented the Phase One of this plan to all of our neighborhood council districts. And she's also put together, backed together the CERT team and trying to recruit more members for CERT. And we're going to put together a citizens academy again. The other thing that she's done recently is putting, is working with Moore Park and Thousand Oaks and putting together grant funds to help with evacuation plans that can reach our Spanish-speaking and low to moderate income communities. Now, she gave me a couple of notes on this just to, to share with you, but this is to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And we've received two grants in regards to that. One is for Emergency Preparedness Outreach Campaign for Spanish speakers in low to moderate income communities. And the second is to develop a regional evacuation plan since we all border up against each other. So again, those are two grants. She gets out there and really works on those. And again, like I said, having that private sector perspective from Disney, a global emergency management, it, it's really something that we, we benefit from. So, so the last but not least, reforms legislative, legislative changes in training. Obviously, a lot has happened over the last few years. And one thing, again, I'm proud of, the department's in full compliance with the state RIPA or the Racial and Identity Profiling Advisory Board Best Practices. You can find that report online as well. Our, our, you know, procedures for stopping and contacting people are all in compliance. We were ahead of the game with this through our VersaTerm computer system. The officers, you know, can have everything they have right in front of them in the field to, to comply with this. So that's, that's been up and running. Also, you're going to have a staff report coming to you in April. Commander Lou will be presenting this on AB 481, which is a disclosure of all the military equipment that we have. I can thankfully say we don't have a lot of military equipment, but it's interesting how the state defines that. So you'll, you'll get a full report on that and a presentation on that as well. 2021, the entire staff, including sworn civilian, underwent eight-hour implicit bias racial profiling and human relations training. And this was department mandatory training and it's going to be ongoing. So we, we did the eight-hour block in 2021. We're going to have follow-up training. It's put on by the Joseph Levy Institute. They put on the training for tools for tolerance for law enforcement at the Museum of Tolerance in Los Angeles. So it's a great firm and the, the training was well-received by our staff and it was, it was, it was very interactive. So that was good to do that. Again, like I said, we have a chaplain program and a peer support program that are vitally important, not only for our officers, but the chaplain program also can go out in the community and work with grieving families and it's really important to have that. And then the department's Lexipol policies are in compliance with all the legislative changes passed in government, in the Governor Sweeping Police Reform Package. So, you know, things that were in there that a lot of people asked me about, we're already doing that. We're already ahead of the game in a lot of that. So there wasn't a lot that we needed to change and that's some of the benefit of having Lexipol. As soon as these changes come at the state level or at the federal level, we make the changes automatically. So, and with that, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
I have a quick question. Easy, it's an easy one. National Night Out. I know that's a very popular event. Do you think we'll be able to do it this year?
I, I do. I definitely do. If, if, if things keep going the way they're going, absolutely.
Oh, good. I've had neighbors ask me. They said, we're new, we want to meet everybody. We heard about this big party.
And we just had the biggest one right before the pandemic. It was the biggest one we ever had in 2019 and then, and then we got hit with the lockdown.
Well, I told them I would ask, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Lou Evans.
Yes, I, I'm curious to know, you know, there, there's a lot of public, it seems like there's a lot of public relations from the SROs to the Coffee with a Cop and the, you know, it, it, I have to tell you, it disturbed me to see a bunch of toys inside of a SWAT vehicle. For a lot of communities of color and low-income communities, that's very triggering. You know, that's not an image that I would like to see. I'm sure there's other vehicles that you can put toys into besides the SWAT vehicles.
Well, I can understand that. I mean, I guess the thing is, is that what I'm trying to, one of the things I'm trying to explain is that we, we kind of show those vehicles in a different light. And a, and a Bearcat, you know, again, it's popular for kids that are interested in it. And so when we do that, I can, I can understand where you're coming from, but it's also a way of de-escalating the feeling that people have with that. So by putting toys in it, by having officers show up on Christmas, it's, it's, again, it's showing that image that, you know, that there is a different side, that police officers are humans too. And so it's, it's kind of a de-escalation approach to it. It's, it's not done in an aggressive way. It's not like we're driving the Bearcat down the street, you know, and, and leaving it there and not. But you can see in the picture there, the, the kids get to come out, they climb on it. You know, it's the same thing we do with the Touch a Truck events out at City Hall when we have those. And we bring out the fire trucks, we bring out the Bearcat and the different vehicles and the kids get to play on them. So we've done this with the Special Olympics too, when we do the Tipicop, where we raise funds for Special Olympics. We bring the Bearcat out and the SWAT officers stand out there kind of with a big jar and people donate money into that for Special Olympics. It's kind of like what the fire department does with the boot campaign, walking out there. So, you know, I, I see where you're coming from with that, but I, I think it's a, it's kind of a balance, right? It's a cost benefit analysis. You got to look at it and say, I'm going to get some, you know, I'm going to affect some people by giving them a positive outlook towards it by showing the presence.
I think I'm just going back to your, you know, your mission statement and thank you for sharing that. You know, that, you know, you recognize that all people are worthy of equality and dignity. So if it triggers any people at all, I think it's not worth doing. You know, use another vehicle, use something else to, to show that. Because, you know, we, that, that mission statement, you know, doesn't match that when, you know, when I, when they see that. And there are a lot of people that are traumatized by encounters with law enforcement.
I know. And I, and I, I see where you're, where you're coming from, but I'd have to respectfully disagree with that because anytime we show up to something, there, we could trigger anybody. I mean, I, I remember going to calls, you know, and not knowing that somebody, you know, had an issue with something and, and I had no idea I was walking into it and just the mere presence of my uniform would cause people uncomfort. I can't operate like that. I, I have to try to, I have to try to outstretch my hand, you know, and the officers do the same thing. We have to try to go out there and interact with the community. And, you know, yeah, there are times when people are intimidated, but, you know, oftentimes what I found in my career is that just a chance to talk to an officer without that, you know, front there, it gives them a chance to get to know them better. And so, you know, yeah, I mean, the badge and gun, it just, it is what it is. I can't, I can't help that completely. But, you know, it's the personality of the officer, the way they handle it, the way they go about it, that I think makes a big difference.
And, you know, it's, and I assume that's a two-way street too, because I saw that you had the implicit bias training and I'm glad that the entire department went through that. And Joseph Levy is great, Museum of Tolerance has great programs. My sisters are trained there as well. But, you know, I hope that, that it's a two-way street as well. You know, that the officers are seeing, that are abiding by this mission statement, that everyone deserves respect and dignity and equality and that that, that the officers are seeing us, the residents, as humans as well. So I'm just hoping that that's part of that.
That, that's why we're doing the training and if they're not, they'll be held accountable for not doing that. That's, that's something that is part of the accountability piece of this, is that there is a system in place so that when we have people that drift over that side of it or they do manifest any behavior like that, it's not tolerated. But thankfully, the training, like I said, it's, you know, it was well-received. I, I spoke with Mr. Levy and he said that, you know, that they were very interactive because you're always worried when you put on training, are people going to take it seriously? Are they going to participate? And he had very favorable reports about the training.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation is from Environmental Services. It's Mara Mulch and Sean Gibson will make that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. Staff has prepared an overview of the city's housing activities, including current market conditions, recent approvals, state resources access during COVID-19, funding sources for affordable housing, existing programs, and select housing element programs focused on maximizing community access to housing while maintaining community standards and local control. For each slide, we will provide you a high-level overview and answer any questions on specific programs and services on, in the areas of interest as they arise. As many of us are aware, housing affordability remains a national issue. What may be surprising to some is that Ventura County recently in July of 2020 ranked the third least affordable of the 100 largest metro areas throughout the country. The only metro areas that outpaced us were New York City and San Francisco, with Los Angeles and San Diego coming in fourth and fifth respectively. And this is based on housing prices to wages for those regions. A lack of inventory continues to drive prices upward, but what may not be understood is that affordability is not solely affected by the lack of housing production. More households are aging in place, reducing available inventory, which contributes to price increases, also reducing those eligible to make a purchase for those that already have market equity, limiting the entry for new homeowners. Substantial financial resources are needed for down payments and oftentimes investors can outbid single families, which significantly limits options for those households trying to enter the market and that have limited financial resources. for those households trying to enter the market and that have limited financial resources. As shown from the California Association of Realtors, in February, the overall number of home sales are down statewide, but prices have continued to increase from statewide median 765,000 last month to over 771,000 in February, so January to February, with homes continuing to sell at or above listing price. Inventory remains low with homes sitting on the market for shorter periods of time. California's demand continues to outpace its supply as it has for the past 20-plus years. As of February, local prices remain a little higher than the statewide median. Price increases continue to affect all communities within the state. Simi Valley remains more affordable compared to the county as a whole. However, compared to February 2021, there has been a decrease of nearly 20% in overall sales and an increase of over 16% in inventory as represented by active listings since last year within the city. This could be a positive sign of showing stabilization of prices if this trend continues. Homes in Simi Valley are sitting on the market a little longer than elsewhere in the county. However, sales prices are a bit higher than asking price in Simi, showing that we're a desirable community to reside in. We currently have a slightly higher rate of price reductions, which again suggests that the recent increase in our local inventory may positively impact prices for buyers long-term. There's still a significant need among those that are currently housed to achieve, achieve financial stability when faced with significant life issues. COVID-19 was a prime example of a major life disruption on a large scale that threatened many households' housing and overall financial stability. COVID adversely affected a number of residents statewide. Fortunately, 769 households in our community were successful in accessing over $10.5 million in state assistance. This helped to prevent evictions and protected landlords from defaulting on mortgages as a result. For those still in need of, of assistance, the state is accepting applications for COVID-19 rental assistance through March 31st. Additionally, with the stay-at-home orders, housing options have received greater scrutiny and influenced people's overall perception of their housing needs in the market. It also made suburban areas like Ventura County and Simi Valley specifically much more desirable, which undoubtedly has had an impact on sales prices and rents. In the past five years, the city has approved and the market, private market has developed a total of 670 housing units of various types. There's an additional 2,099 units approved and not yet built, and another 100 units currently in the review process. Overall, the percentage of affordable units across all of these is at 16%, which outpaces standard inclusionary ordinance, housing ordinance standards. As shown, it can take time from the time that units were approved to the time that they are built, so production cannot be the only approach to improving housing affordability. While the city is responsible for providing the zoning and approving housing developments, the delay in those approved projects getting built are affected by a number of factors. Most recently, labor and supply shortages have impacted the speed of construction despite favorable financing conditions. However, with the Fed recently increasing interest rates, some projects may become even less attractive financially until conditions improve. As you can see, the city has consistently had strong housing development in the area of above moderate and moderate categories, as those require the least amount of financial support to the private market to assist with the costs of development. The 2021 to 29 RENA cycle is already underway, and the city is noticeably outpacing the achievements of the two prior completed cycles. The city's entitlement and ADU activity is strongly addressing the current allocations in the above moderate, moderate and low-income categories. Again, I want to note that the very low housing approvals and production is already outpacing the prior two cycles. Overall, this demonstrates positive growth of housing options in the community for all income levels. That being said, since the dissolution of redevelopment statewide, the city has limited funding available to low-income residents for various forms of housing assistance. While some of these may appear to have significant balances, it is important to note that once the balances are depleted, there is no ongoing replenishment of these sources, making it important to utilize them strategically for the greatest community benefit. Additionally, the successor housing agency funds, funds city staff that provides oversight to housing agreements and works to create new affordable housing opportunities, which those are ongoing recurring costs for those staff members. However, these funds can be used to subsidize housing development through land acquisition, construction and operating subsidies, or to provide households with down payment assistance to create greater housing stability for members of our community. The city currently has a number of programs and services in place to assist residents with housing affordability. These range from providing the assistance just referenced to monitoring existing rental and ownership units to ensure affordability is being maintained for the duration of the deed restriction periods. It is important to note that the majority of residents served by these programs earn less than 80% of the area median income, which for a household of four is currently 97,800 a year. With the current market conditions, there's still a significant need for affordable housing opportunities for those in the higher income categories, even with the additional 258 affordable units in the pipeline as illustrated in the far-left column. To further the city's support of housing development in line with the RENA requirements, last October, the city council adopted its most recent housing element. The housing element outlines a number of programs focused on making housing accessible, affordable, and economically viable for the community. The following are highlights from the housing element as adopted. As noted earlier, the city has a number of existing programs related to affordable housing. The city's housing staff provides oversight of existing affordable units, works with developers to adopt new affordability agreements, and provides support to homeowners with property transfers and home repair loans, all with the goal of providing ongoing affordability to residents. As mentioned last week, at last Monday's city council meeting, during the review of the general plan annual progress report, the state recently added the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements to the housing element. However, the city has long provided resources to addressing housing discrimination and increasing housing equity among our community's most vulnerable populations. The city currently dedicates resources to support residents to prevent and address instances of housing discrimination, as well as ongoing participation in regional discussions and processes related to the allocation of both federal and state funding related to housing. The remaining programs focus on enhancements to our zoning designations, development standards, and collaboration with applicants to ultimately develop affordable and other housing projects. For these, I will turn it over to Sean Gibson, our city planner.
Good evening. To comply with the regional housing needs assessment, RENA, as mentioned, the city re-zoned approximately 111 parcels to higher densities, or added mixed-use overlays to achieve enough sites to accommodate the 2,793 units required as defined by state law criteria. These sites, along with some pre-existing sites, will now allow by right approval of rental or ownership development projects with at least 20% affordable units for lower-income households. By right approval allows for a streamlined approval process in as little as 60 days, and projects will only be subject to objective design standards. This outcome promotes additional housing by reducing some paperwork fees and processing times. To implement our new housing element, the city will need to amend the development code to more clearly spell out the by right approval process and solidify our objective design standards to help maintain our desired community appearance. At the same time, we are now subject to replacement housing zoning provisions for any units lost as a result of unit demolition by private property owners and/or developers. And to continually, continuously monitor these RENA sites to ensure that project sites built below maximum densities have that density transferred to other sites to make up the difference, should a lower-density project be approved at such site. Staff is in the process of setting up a program to monitor these new requirements. Another adopted housing element program is to review current development standards to promote affordable housing. Some of the measures include requirements for shared parking, increased height limits, reduced setbacks, and maximize allowable, allowable density. We will be reevaluating our parking standards and alternative transportation options such as biking and car share to help reduce development expenses as a result of these parking requirements. Also, with our current SP2 and LEAP grant funds, we're looking into streamlining the review process by 2024 to further encourage housing development. Also, the city is pursuing grant funding to update the city's bicycle master plan to create other transportation methods and more complete streets. The city will be providing more transparent fee information to the public and developers, such as posting fees on the website and site-specific fee options by 2027. Next, we will also continue to pursue the transportation options and infrastructure such as ride share, car share options, vehicle charging stations, and other parking alternatives. Another housing program we are to look at is our mixed-use development standards, and to provide incentives to encourage development along transit corridors. Such standards will be necessary to ensure that affordable housing is attractive housing, provides amenities, creates a sense of place, and enhances, enhances livability and walkability. Without these code updates, we may not be able to achieve all of our RENA goals, and we may have to continue to rezone more outlined properties to make up lost density per state Another goal of the housing element is to enhance communications with the development community, which could be developers, individual property owners, and nonprofits, to help encourage maximizing project densities within the RENA sites and encourage high levels of affordability. We will continue to offer incentives when increased affordability and density is provided by means and density allowances and code, code standards are reduced when additional densities provided. And lastly, to further encourage development on our valley floor, we're currently utilizing our SP2 and LEAP grant funds to prepare a specific plan for the Taplo Street and Los Angeles Avenue corridors, which are mixed-use areas, and to utilize and improve existing infrastructure, create inviting streets, street skapes, create special zoning and mixed-use standards to pull these efforts together, and a single document to paint a picture on how these areas can be revitalized with a mix of commercial and housing, which would lead our city into the future over the next 20 to 50 years. This specific plan will serve as a blueprint for developers to refer to as they look at these properties as they become available for redevelopment, as well as how the city can take on efforts to enhance the street right-of-way, such as streets, bike lanes, wider sidewalks, lighting and landscaping, to encourage additional housing in these areas on the valley floor.
All of these programs are intended to assist in the development of affordable housing. Staff works with applicants to provide assistance in the review of both state and local requirements, to streamline the approval process and evaluate projects for possible financial assistance from the city. It is important to note that the city has not denied an affordable housing application that met all general plan and zoning requirements. However, the city has and will continue to exercise its discretion when general plan amendments are requested for housing and other developments based on community need, feedback, and maintaining a balance within the general plan. That concludes our presentation. Sean Stratus and I are available for any additional, for
Thank you. Elaine Litzler.
Appreciate the presentation. Just one quick question. When, recently, there have been pushed for ADUs to be approved, accessory dwelling units, and how are those counted in our RENA numbers? Particularly in, I mean, are they considered above income, moderate income? How is that assessed? Because obviously, you don't necessarily have a contractual arrangement with the city.
We're able to count them based on their census tract. So we're actually able to count a number of different housing developments based on census tract without any affordability restrictions in place. So depending on what part of town they're being developed in, as that correlates with the census tract income levels, we're able to report them to RENA.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have a question. I see that there's on one of the, well, my first question is, can you send this, this is for all the presenters, can you guys send your presentations? Can you email them to us? Because Councilwoman Litzler and I are taking pictures, and it'd be nice if we just had the original copies.
They'll all be presented on our website, as well as we can email them individually to you as well.
Okay, thank you. Because it's so good. All the information is so good. I want it, I want it for my records. And the, my question is, I see that there's a lot of projects that are approved, but they haven't been built yet. Like, you know, I remember when we approved the SROs on Topo, and I'm like, when will these be built? And we have developers that are coming to us and asking for extensions. I mean, developers that came 10, 15 years ago and that, you know, said, hey, we were going to build this, and that was 10 or 15 years ago. So you can't tell me the past 10 or 15 years. There's that much fluctuation in, in, you know, the, the labor costs and the, and the building costs. I mean, costs are costs, right? They're, they're going to find a way to make money because they're developers, and most of them are for profit. So what can we do, or, you know, how can we make sure that this stuff is built? Because it's nice that it's, that it says there, you know, that SROs are part of our affordable housing plan, but they haven't been built yet. So how do we move that along? What are other cities doing so that we can make sure that that happens? Because our, you know, economy has shrunk in Ventura County by 3% because we're not providing the housing. And that's from the, you know, economics professor at CLU, so.
So I think one of the most important things is to note that when we looked at our RENA numbers, that our ADU and our entitlement credits are actually outpacing our prior, our prior cycles. So that's a really positive sign for our community. But to your point, Councilmember Lou Evinos, we're in very limited position to influence the market factors that make a for-profit company determine profitability for them. So even though it may seem as though there's been little fluctuation over the 10 years that they should have found a good time to build, many of these developers might have a comprehensive property portfolio. So they're balancing, they're carrying costs of one project against what they're trying to accomplish in other areas. So I think that the thing that we need to focus on are the areas that we have control, which is through the housing element and the programs that are out there. So many of the programs that Sean described in greater detail are intended to help positively influence, to kind of close that development cycle window, so that from the time of entitlement to the time of construction and build, it can be more streamlined, so there's not as much fluctuation in the market. But outside of that, and a magic money tree to incentivize development, it's, you know, it's really left up to the open market and what the economic indicators are out there for developers.
And what are we doing as a city to work with these nonprofit developers with, like at Mini Mansions and, you know, that, that want to come here, they want to build here, but every time I speak to them, they're like, you know, Simi Valley, it's, it's an impossible hurdle to get through. And some of the stuff that they built here, they built a while ago. So, you know, what can we do to work with nonprofit developers so that, because, you know, they're not based on profit? So how can, how can we incentivize that?
So I think one of, you know, should it be the council's pleasure, there is some opportunity for using some of the funds that we have for land acquisition and then being able to assist in doing like a request for proposal type of scenario to assist those nonprofit developers. However, we have had nonprofit developers come forward in the past and not been able to make their projects work for things outside of control of the city. So we can evaluate opportunities. We do evaluate the individual affordable housing proposals as people bring them forward, and try to work with the individual developers, nonprofit or for-profit, for helping to subsidize operating costs through an affordable housing agreement as well. So we have a number of tools, but I don't know that it's a lack of ability of doing business with the city as much it is market conditions and scarce availability of land on our valley floor open to development of housing for nonprofit developers.
And with that said, I would note that the city has had several projects by Cabrillo Economic Development in our community. We have, we are, we have worked with Mini Mansions regarding the acquisition. They purchased an existing apartment project that they recently upgraded, if I remember correctly. We have discussions ongoing right now with Habitat for Humanity regarding a, a single-family detached project up here on Avenue in Simi. So we've, we've have, we have a pretty good working relationship with the nonprofit organizations that work in, that are based in Ventura County, as well as other nonprofits that have done projects. Christian Senior Housing has done projects in Simi, and there are several others. So I think that we've had a pretty good track record with working with them. Again, I mean, it's, it's, we, we can, we can zone the property, we can provide the property, we can approve the projects, we can't, we can't force them to build it. And going back And going back to some of the earlier statements, there's a lot of market pressures right now in what's delaying the construction of housing. You've, coming out of COVID, you've got a supply chain issue that is starting to resolve itself, but now you're ending up in a labor issue. And the labor issue is twofold. One is labor to work on the projects in terms of skilled workers to actually build the projects themselves. The other part is that there's a severe shortage on truckers in order to bring product to the development sites. And you've got housing developers that are pushing projects off six, eight, 12 months because they're just not able to get the product. When supply chain issues are resolved, they can't guarantee the product actually going to make it to the job site. And if you're, if you're under construction, you've got a construction loan that is costing you on a daily basis, and any delay is going to continue to get expensive. So developers are starting to push projects off right now until they can be guaranteed they're going to be able to get the labor that they need and the materials that they need in order to build the projects.
So I guess my question is, once entitlements are given or granted to a developer, can they, obviously they can be transferred if they decide to sell that, but what happened, again, I'm going back to the SROs because I've been waiting with bated breath for these to be built. I was excited that we approved them. It's something we don't have anywhere in the city, and there's a huge need for them, but they're not, you know, they're not coming to fruition. So once it's, once it's given an entitlement, if that person, for whatever reason, that developer, you know, can't build it, then can that entitlement be passed on to someone else, or yes?
I mean, typically, what would happen is either they're asked for a time extension, or if they sell it, the entitlements go with the land. So, and, you know, as long as they're keeping up within the time periods of those entitlements for use inauguration and other milestones within the permit conditions, then they're able to transfer those to other owners. Similarly, with an affordable housing agreement, we have successor and assigns clauses in which the city, the city's role in that is to make sure that whoever's absorbing that agreement can fulfill all the responsibilities of the original agreement, but, you know, we don't impede the transfer of the property or the transfer of the agreements as long as the conditions set forth and the original permits and the original conditions are met.
In particular, the SRO project, the project was approved, it was then sold to somebody else. And quite frankly, if, whatever price it was sold at, it could have been sold too expensive, or the person bought it at a too high of a rate without really doing his due diligence to figure out what the cost would be to develop it. So I know we're having conversations with the current owner of the project, who owns the entitlements and owns what can be built there. They're working through some of the issues that they need to figure out.
Okay, and then, now, obviously, you talked about improving the bike pathways and things like that, and things that we can do as a city to make, you know, these areas of development on the valley floor specifically more amenable. So is that something that we should be considering in our budget so that, I know, one of the things I brought up, and thank you, Brian, is, you know, having the fiber optics throughout the city. That's something that makes us more attractive, right, to businesses, to developers, you know, to residents. So is that something, having the bike pathways, is that something that would make us, and walkability, would that make us more attractive to developers?
I think any type of amenity and attractiveness of your community is going to be more attracted to a developer. I mean, they're all, taking nothing away from developers, but quite frankly, they're motivated by being able to make a profit. And if they can do so, they're going to. Our biggest problem is that we're just running out of land. That's, that's the biggest challenge, is we're becoming an infill community where we're starting to have to look at properties transitioning from their current uses to potentially future uses that may include residential. That is why we're looking at LA Avenue and Tapo Street as potentially introducing residential into those areas. That's why we're having ongoing conversations with the owners of the Simi Valley Town Center about residential up on their site. So we're going to have to start looking deeper at transitioning land uses. As an example, the project the council recently approved on Tapo Street at San Fernando Plaza, which is taking down half of a shopping center and adding residential, and similar to Tapo and Alamo. Those are the things we're going to start looking at more often. Because the ability to, the profit is difficult on a smaller project of, if you're talking multifamily, of 50 units or less, you're not going to attract a lot of developers because the margins are too small and the land is not great enough unless you're going straight up, but then your costs get higher as you go higher up. The cost of develop goes up proportionally. So we have to look at different opportunities and look at transitioning land uses in the future.
So should mixed use, and I noticed you avoided using that word, should mixed use be more intentional when we develop policies? Because that's what the economics professor at Cal Luthren University at the V-Cog meeting mentioned. You know, the place that is having the biggest economic growth is San Fernando Valley, and that's because of their mixed use. And everywhere I go, and because I work there, as do so many Simi Valley residents, that's what we're seeing. So is that something that we should be more intentional about?
We have been, and we continue to be. I know our Stratus and Sean continue to talk to developers about mixed-use opportunities and SRO opportunities in commercial zones. So we do continue to have those discussions, and through the housing element and the recent current general plan, we have designated a lot of different locations around the community as mixed-use locations. And we're always willing to consider additionals for ones that aren't currently identified. I think we're, we are trying to accomplish that today.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to say that it's been my experience, over time and having multiple businesses here and what have you, there was a time when the city had a reputation of not being the easiest to work with. The nonprofit builders that you mentioned, I think Mini Mansions, Cabrillo, all of them, I've dealt with directly, and I've never had any of them complain. In fact, just the opposite. I've only heard praise for working with staff. On the rare occasion I get complaints, I go to the city manager, give him the information on the company complaining, or person complaining, and then we do research. And I think almost universally, it comes out that it is not anything to do with the city. It's a contractor, or some architect, or somebody is blaming the city for something they didn't do. And so to sit on the diocent say without any backup information is to badmouth our city, and I don't think that's deserving.
I literally just talked to someone last week, Mayor, so I'm just relaying the information and hoping that we can do better.
Next presentation is from Administrative Services, going over budget and PERS. Joe Tony, our Director of Administrative Services, and Carolyn Johnson, our Budget Officer, will make this presentation.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, let Carolyn Johnson pull this up. And Carolyn, our Budget Officer, will start the presentation, and then we'll hand it off to myself.
We are here tonight to present to you the city's mid-year budget report. We'll start with a review of how the general fund ended last fiscal year, which is fiscal year 2021, and then go into the status of the general fund for the first half of this current fiscal year, and how we foresee that year ending. And then we'll go into some analysis of the most current pension funding numbers. So if you remember, the coronavirus pandemic emerged just as the fiscal year 2021 budget was being developed. This required a quick response by city staff to reevaluate anticipated revenues, and City Council was presented with a proposed budget that was $3.4 million less than what we had originally been preparing. As the year progressed, vacant positions were kept open, and nonessential departmental expenditures were delayed. This combined with the stronger-than-anticipated sales tax and property tax revenue, causing the revenue in the general fund came in higher than budgeted, and expenses were lower than budgeted. The year-end expenditures for fiscal year 2021 represent a $43,000 decrease over the city's expenditures for the previous year, which was fiscal year 1920. And that is if you exclude the $6 million transfer to the COVID Recovery Fund that took place at the end of 1920. So fiscal year 2021 ended with an $8 million surplus. So this chart takes a closer look at the general fund revenues for fiscal year 2021. Total revenues came in over $3 million more than budgeted, while some areas came in lower than budget, such as service charges and fines. The categories of taxes and franchise fees and licenses and permits compensated by coming in well over budget. So taking a closer look at the category of taxes and franchise fees, you can see it was the property tax and sales tax that really came in strong. The property tax came in higher than anticipated due to the boom in the housing market, which caused many homes to be reassessed. A large piece of that is also from commercial real estate transactions, which have also seen large increases in pricing. And the real estate market is also what brought the documentary transfer tax revenue in above budget as well. The sales tax came in higher than anticipated because we expected a strong downturn in consumer spending due to COVID. What we did not anticipate was how much people would increase their online shopping when they could not shop at the brick-and-mortar stores. It was the switch to online shopping that brought our sales tax in higher than anticipated. The entire category of taxes and franchises came in $6 million over budget. Then taking a look at the category of licenses and permits, you can see it was the building permits, plan check services, and encroachment permits that really came in strong last year. Building permits and plan check services came in strong due to the higher-than-average activity. Examples are people upgrading their homes, adding room additions, adding ADUs, or adding solar panels. Also, the new fee structure that City Council approved in December of 2019 and went into effect in February of 2020 also contributed to the increase in revenue in these areas. The increase in the encroachment permit revenue is also partially due to the fee increases, but it's also due to the franchise utilities upgrading their facilities to meet California Public Utilities Commission requirements. This activity is expected to continue for a couple of years, and we are realizing the strong revenue here in this current fiscal year as well. So moving on to the expenditure side of the general fund for fiscal year 2021, expenditures came in $4.5 million lower than the adopted budget. The largest savings was in personnel costs, with the Police Department contributing almost $2 million in savings, and Public Works at almost $1 million. Environmental Services also had large savings in personnel costs. These savings are due to ongoing vacancies in the departments, and we are still realizing personnel savings this year as well. The category of services had the second-largest cost savings, with materials and supplies coming in third. The savings in those two categories were from a variety of things, such as training and conferences that were canceled or moved to online attendance due to COVID. We have contracts with consultants that we only use on an as-needed basis, and we budget that at the maximum level, but usually typically those contracts are not fully expended. Uniform costs were down due to staff vacancies, and the school board meetings were not broadcast because they did not have live in-person meetings, and so we weren't paying our vendor for broadcasting services. So it's a variety of different things. So as of July 1st, 2020, which was the start of fiscal year 2021, the general fund balance was $40.5 million. After all revenues and expenditures of the year accounted for, the city had a year-end surplus of $8 million. That brought the general fund balance to $48.5 million, well above the City Council mandated prudent reserve of 17% of expenses. And that would be just over $12 million for the fiscal year 2021. So the year-end general fund balance of $48.5 million is made up of three components. The first is the 17% prudent reserve, which is just over $12 million. And then there's the assigned fund balance of just over $6 million, and that's made up of funds that are already committed for specific purposes. And then the remaining balance of $30.4 million is the unassigned fund balance, and that is money that can be used at the council's discretion. So now shifting to this current fiscal year, we're taking a look at the first six months of the year. The general fund revenue is coming in at 48.82% of budget. Licenses and permits are coming in well over budget. That revenue is mostly from the building permits, encroachment permits, and plan check services, just like we saw that increase in last fiscal year's numbers as well. And again, that's mostly from the high activity level and the home upgrades, and the encroachment permit revenue from the utilities upgrading their facilities. And again, services is low. There has been a delay in some large projects coming in, and also some bad debt write-off that happened this year that impacted the revenue numbers in that category as well. And looking toward the remainder of the fiscal year, we're forecasting ending the year with $1.8 million more in revenues than both the adopted or the revised budgets. The increases are mostly from property and sales tax, as well as the building permit activity. So looking at the expenditure side of the general fund expenses for the first six months of this year, we see that the city has only spent 39.3% of expenses through December 31st. The largest percentage of savings so far is in services and materials and supplies. And that's what we saw in last year's budget as well, last year's final numbers as well. And it's for mostly the same reasons. I mean, trainings and conferences were still canceled or online, and the same things, the contracts with the consultants. So looking toward the remainder of the fiscal year, we're forecasting ending the year with an expenditure savings of $6.7 million less than the adopted budget, and $9.1 million less than the revised budget. So the revised budget includes unspent funds from last fiscal year that were carried forward into this year, and also any budget supplemental appropriations that have been approved by City Council. Once again, personnel savings are the large driver of the yearly savings. There are currently 77 vacant positions citywide out of approximately 547 positions, with 50 of those vacancies paid from the general fund, with approximately 402 general fund positions in total. In the Police Department, there's 21 vacant positions, 16 of those are sworn. Public Works has 12 vacancies in their general fund operations. Environmental Services has eight. Now, the city currently has open recruitments for 20 positions right now. And then also, we are anticipating the typical savings in the services category again. So the combination of increased revenues and decreased expenditures has us forecasting the year to end with an $8.7 million surplus, which would bring the general fund balance to $57.2 million, again, well over the council-mandated prudent reserve of 17% of expenditures, which would be approximately $12.2 million. So now I'll turn it over to Joe, who'll give an economic outlook, as well as update on pension funding.
We'd also like to touch on how the economy is looking, and this will, of course, have some ramifications for us at a local level. But some high-level items, the economy is running hot, and what that means is it's overheating by expanding at an unsustainable rate, which typically is illustrated by rising inflation and an incredibly low unemployment rate. Inflation is also at the highest rate since 1982, with about CPI at 7.9% in February of 2022. That's year-over-year. So the Fed is looking at increasing interest rates. That's in an attempt to cool the economy. In essence, a tightening policy. So just recently, they announced some 25-basis-point rate increases, and even today, it came out with a very hawkish tone of saying that they'll aggressively increase rates as needed. And then, of course, we're dealing with geopolitics at play. You're seeing a war in Europe, which is having ramifications for agriculture, energy prices, commodities. So that has lingering effects and can greatly impact inflation or keep inflation going more than anticipated. And then, of course, there's the fear of that growing into a larger conflict and involving more sovereign countries, becoming a world war. And then, of course, COVID. There's a lot of unknown right now. It looks like it's heading towards endemic status. But we are starting to see some increases in Asia and Europe the past couple of weeks. So in regards to the economy being at its hottest, so March of 2022 was the, in essence, the hottest that the Fed has allowed unemployment and inflation to go before increasing rates. So if you look So if you look at other points in the economy, right now, we're at three point eight percent unemployment rate with a seven point nine percent year-over-year CPI. You can see that that's a pretty big swing compared to other years where there were huge market changes. Now, that being said, the feds didn't really take a strong stance on inflation until the seventies and the crisis with stagflation and the oil embargo and everything else that was going on. So we've seen a lot more of an active Fed since then, but that will have ramifications as they try to tighten policy. So here's some charts just to display what we're talking about. So CPI, seven point nine percent, February twenty twenty-two, that's drastic change over the last ten years, at a very high peak. And then some of the major sectors driving that, the blue is services, which is food and energy. You can see that that's really at a high level over the last couple of years. And then the other area that's really driving it are goods, which, again, food and energy related, but those are the two major drivers. And while we're seeing some pretty high inflation rates, the area we kind of try to focus on are the sticky categories, so the areas where inflation would stay. For the most part, we're seeing those categories moderate. Health services are down. Owners' equivalent rent is staying at a decent rate, but where we are starting to see a little bit of an uptick is in rent. And of course, that's concerning for cost of living when you start to see rent prices drastically increasing. But otherwise, most of the categories have moderated. We've even seen in some of the flexible categories, used cars actually dipped this last month. So that category is starting to come down. So there's some positive signs with inflation, maybe starting to change. And as we mentioned, the feds are taking a hawkish tone. So while they just did a recent rate increase, they're already planning five more, which the markets have already priced in, and they could take more hikes as we go along. And then we talked about geopolitics. So you can see some of the major categories that Russia and Ukraine impact. Crude petroleum in the upper left is a very significant factor. Down below are the major countries that it gets exported to, which is basically the rest of Europe, refined petro, coal, and et cetera. And then Ukraine is big on the agricultural side. So these have impacts to Europe and a lot of our trade partners, and we'll see if that starts raising prices in the U.S. or not. And then, lastly, we touched on COVID. So right now, we seem to be in a pretty good place, but we are starting to see some upticks in the rest of the world. Europe recently is starting to see an increase, and you can get kind of a scale to the lower right, that's about two million cases over the last fourteen days. So Europe's seeing an uptick in cases in East Asia, Southeast Asia. And of course, with Europe, it tends to be that we trail them a few weeks later. So we have to be cognizant of that and see if there's any changes. Of course, it seems like our healthcare system can manage it now, and we're in the point of basically living with it. So we'll see what other variants come down the road. So in summary, the economy is running hot, but the Fed's trying to cool. Inflation may persist, but some of the sticky sectors are beginning to moderate. Geopolitics has many unknowns, so we're very cautious on that front. And then COVID has, future variants are very likely, but potentially, we're getting into the endemic stage. And then, you know, there's mixed outlook as well on the economy overall. You have some economists saying the economy is churning at a positive rate, and I think they recently polled investors, and about sixty-six percent of investors are still optimistic. So overall, that's a positive tone. But then, if you talk to other economists, we're in a bubble, there's, you know, a real estate problem, inflation, the market frenzy over the last two years, and it'll all come crashing down. So if we knew what was going to happen, we probably wouldn't be sitting here right now. So with that, we're going to transition to pension funding update. We use Gov Invest as our consultant that helps with projections for pension and labor costing. And just a small disclaimer, of course, the numbers presented here are estimates only based on our most recent sources of data. CalPERS data is only as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and we won't have their updates for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one until the fall. So this is simply a projection that helps get us a better picture of where we're at today. So for twenty twenty-one, CalPERS investment returns were a positive twenty-one point three percent, as was to be expected with the market returns that we saw. And then, counter to that, CalPERS, the CalPERS Board made some decisions. They reduced the discount rate assumption from seven percent to six point eight percent. That has a negative impact on our funding. And then, they reduced the inflation rate assumption from two and a half percent to two point three percent, which seems wildly out of sync with where we are at, but we'll see how that goes. And then they increased the wage growth assumption from two point seven five percent to two point eight percent. And then, of course, there's some other miscellaneous demographic assumption changes in there that we're still getting our arms around. So how do those changes impact our funding or our pension plan? So our accrued liability went up thirteen million to five hundred and sixty-five point five million, but with the investment returns, our valuation of our assets went up fifty million to four hundred and twenty-five, or four hundred and twenty-four point nine million, which is a huge return. And then, even better is that our unfunded accrued liability, or UAL, went down thirty-seven million, so that's significant. So our funded status went up, and this is overall, by about seven point three percent to seventy-five percent funded status. That's a good position to be in. The normal cost impact in nominal dollars, so our normal cost went up by about four hundred thousand, that'll be our annual cost, but that's offset by the other returns. So you see here, as a percent of payroll, it's going up by almost a percent for our normal cost, a little too far, to about fourteen percent. And that's including just the investment return and the discount rate reduction. So that's part of the reason why our normal cost is going up. But on a trajectory of where things are headed, we are drastically going to be decreasing our classic employees. You see kind of this incredible rise over the next few years, where classic employees are trading out. That's mostly because Brian Gabel doesn't want to be here another thirty-five years. But we are seeing that decrease, and we're seeing Peppera employees start to take over. And so by about twenty, thirty there, it'll be the vast majority of our workforce. Now, what we touched on was the UAL contribution. This is our unfunded liability. As you see, it went down by about five million per year, and you see the blue is where we would have been, and if estimating our returns, our UAL drops significantly. Now, netted against our employer contributions, we were getting a net positive of about four point eight million that we'll be paying, which is really savings. So if we didn't have the changes, the positive changes now, we'd be on the blue trajectory. The reduction and the net positive with the UAL really won't be priced in for a few years. We continue to pay and increase normal costs. But by about, and this is kind of the marker year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's where the most significant drop is. If we were to, in essence, keep funding at the level we were supposed to pay, or kind of a straight-line budget-wise, we could do some strategic funding with that savings to go towards things like additional discretionary payments or a Section 115 trust to help increase our investment returns and smooth future-year losses, which we'll get to in a second. So speaking of losses, so CalPERS historic returns, we've seen over time and time again that when there's incredible gains in the market, it's followed by some lows or even crashes. And so you see that repeat itself. You see the dot-com crash here in the early two thousands. You see an uptick, and then the drop with the Great Recession. You see an uptick, and now we have this huge spike over the last couple of years. Likely, we're in choppy waters for the next few years, and we're already seeing that in the market. So with our twenty-one point three percent return, there's a good chance that that's offset by losses in the coming years. So this is a simple sensitivity analysis. The blue, again, is our default without any of the changes. The green is our investment return of twenty-one point three percent and a six point eight percent discount rate. So you see that positive trend. And then, let's say we only had five percent return in the market the next five years. You see where the red dotted line is. And then, with the amortization period, that spikes in those out years is where that will ultimately hit. And so that's our update. I know we ran through that fairly quickly, but all in all, we're in a very positive situation, both in the budget, in the near term, doing much better than expected because we were very conservative in how we were budgeting with the pandemic, and much better returns in the market. So we're in a great place pension-wise. And we'll take any questions. Perfect presentation, no questions. Good.
No, no, there's a couple that will ask questions.
It was a perfect presentation. May I ask a question, Mer? Is that all right? Thank you. Actually, I thought it was interesting that Carolyn gives us this rosy picture of what we're doing, and then you come forward with the economic outlook, which if I interpret, as far as it being hawkish tone, very hot, et cetera, my interpretation, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, yes, we've done well, but be careful and don't just blow the funds.
Absolutely.
Would that be accurate with what you were just, okay, I just wanted to be sure I was understanding that. Just a question about this last CalPERS presentation. You're saying that right now, our unfunded liability is about seventy-five percent. Is that correct?
Our funded status.
I'm sorry, funded, I'm sorry, funded status, excuse me.
And again, that's an estimate based on the most recent data.
I'm sorry, funded status is seventy-five percent. What is, I just out of curiosity, and I didn't maybe see it, what has been our best funded status in the past? It seems like we're getting in a better, better position. Is that something?
I don't know that offhand. I believe we have a chart.
Well, the problem is that years ago, and this kind of started part of the purse problem, is that the purse was overfunded for a number of years in the late eighties, early nineties, and said cities don't make any payments.
Right.
That's certainly come home, and now cities are paying the price of those no payments. So, I mean, so it, I don't think, since that time, we, at seventy-five percent, that's as good as we've been in a number of years.
I got it. Okay, thank you for that historical context. And I guess that answer leads to, truly, my question I wanted is that, I understand that, although in my mind, we want to pay our debt off entirely, but I'm, I believe a hundred percent funded is not always advised or even recommended. What is the, is there, what is conventional wisdom right now as the, as the ideal level to be funded?
It's kind of arbitrary, but it seems like eighty percent is kind of your benchmark funding level.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Did you have something?
No, I just agree with the hot question. We're watching those interest rates.
Yep.
Oh, wait, we have Councilmember Lev in us.
I just had a quick question, because I want to, I know Carolyn mentioned it, but I just want to clarify for the audience, that that eight million dollar surplus that you talked about, that included the six million dollars for COVID funding that we had set aside. Yes?
It does not.
It does not.
That was the prior, that was actually the prior year nineteen.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is from Assistant City Manager Linda Swan, and there's an analyst, Kelly Tinker, on economic development, and looking at a little deeper dive into some of our, how COVID impacted our business sector and some other issues.
Well, good evening, Mayor Mashburn and City Council. This evening, management analyst Kelly Tinker and I would like to provide an economic development update and share some key economic indicators showing a continued trend of business resiliency within the city. And although COVID-nineteen led to unprecedented disruption of commerce in most industry sectors, we continue to see strong resiliency and signs of recovery as many of our business owners adopted out-of-box thinking and the creation of entirely new business models to stay afloat during unpredictable times of changing mandates and persistent safety concerns.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the City Council. So we have several slides here that are going to have some graphs and some data-specific stuff, and I will alternate with some narrative that hopefully helps to explain some of it.
Mike.
It is on. Can you hear me? Hello? Perfect. So we're going to begin with vacancy rates. Now, I'm too loud, probably. Staff is presenting a snapshot of the city's industrial, office, and retail vacancies to show a comparison between pre-pandemic and current conditions. A vacant space refers to all space not currently occupied by a tenant, regardless of any lease obligation that may be on the space. Looking at year-over-year comparisons of quarter-one vacancy rates for a four-year period provides an accurate picture of the fluctuations in the office sector, with companies consolidating operations to central location outside of the city due to economic necessity, a robust demand for industrial property creating historically low vacancy rates, and a retail market that continues to hold steady as lockdowns ease and stores welcome customers back to in-house shopping. Transitioning to a year-over-year period view, we get a better glimpse of current trends and some rightsizing activities. Over the past several years, Bank of America consolidated operations in other states and moved out of Simi Valley, which put approximately five hundred and ninety-one thousand square feet of office space on the market with buildings located at seventeen fifty-seven and eighteen-hundred Table Canyon and four hundred National Way. Additionally, the former Farmers Insurance Building and its satellite office is located on Cochran Street, added two hundred and seventy thousand square feet of office vacancy. Trends are showing that companies are moving to more open-floor plans with less square footage. And looking ahead to the future, as tenants start to rethink space needs and their leases roll over, businesses will demand buildings that meet the needs of tomorrow, like updated technology and flexible amenities to adapt to today's changing workforce. With the rezoning and approval of the residential and mixed-use development of the farmer's site, and the three Bank of America buildings now converted to light industrial, we're beginning to see a more accurate picture of office space vacancy. Through this transition, the city gained employment opportunities with the conversion of buildings to Amazon facilities and the construction of over three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of new industrial space, as well as needed housing opportunities. Industrial warehousing and logistics centers have been in high demand pre-pandemic and are still going strong now in two thousand twenty-two. The city is witnessing a historically low vacancy rate of zero point nine four percent within the industrial sector, given the most recent quarter-to-date for quarter-one, two thousand twenty-two. According to CBRE, light industrial properties have seen an increase in popularity as a means of work base and storage, and continue to grow at a stunning rate. E-commerce is the major driver of demand for industrial space. Companies are demanding larger, more sophisticated distribution networks to meet consumer demand for fast delivery. With the city's adding nine hundred thousand square feet of new industrial space in late two thousand twenty-two, the city is looking forward to welcoming new businesses to the community. The retail market is showing resiliency and continues to hold steady as the economy emerges from the pandemic. It's important to point out that the Simi Valley Town Center just began to report their data to CoStar in December, which is slightly inflating the quarter-to-date numbers for two thousand twenty-two in its retail vacancy. Additionally, the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond location is still included in the total vacant square footage for the retail sector, but the property owner has signed a letter of intent, and this property should be removed, which is approximately thirty-one thousand square feet, from the available listing once a lease agreement is executed. City staff continues to engage with interested parties for the Cost Plus World Market and former Macaroni Grill site.
Simi Valley is bouncing back strong post-pandemic with positive sales tax numbers and percentage gains. Looking at the most recent sales tax data of quarter-three twenty-one, sales tax amounted to five point seven million, exceeding quarter-three two thousand nineteen and quarter-three two thousand and twenty by fifteen point four eight and seventeen point nine five percent respectively. These strong sales numbers signified the continued rebound from the impacts of the pandemic a year ago. Strong sales from multiple retailers in the family apparel and electronics appliance stores were largely responsible for the growth in general consumer goods. Given the relaxing mask mandates and pent-up demand to eat out, receipts from casual and quick-service restaurants were strong. Strong demand and limited inventory for vehicles caused elevated prices for buyers and contributed to a dramatic jump for new auto dealerships. and contributed to a dramatic jump for new auto dealers. Although car dealers had expressed concerns about inventory shortages due to supply chain disruptions and computer chip shortages earlier this year, the sale of new and used vehicles posted solid gains regardless. Additionally, summer travelers and commuters brought about a lack of supply, causing upward pressure on gas prices, resulting in big gains for the city. So the next few slides that we'll walk through will show how the percentage of sales tax revenue in the top five categories that produce the majority of sales tax for the periods of Q1 '20 through Q4 2021. So beginning with online sales, advancements in technology and the growth of available marketplaces have made it easier than ever to buy and sell online. Although brick-and-mortar retail doors have reopened, e-commerce sales aren't slowing. Provided for you is the percentage of internet sales for sales tax revenue for 2020 till quarter three, 2021. Online sales increased with the onset of the pandemic and remain steady. This popularity stems from the ease and comfort that online shopping offers, prompting more people to select, click, and buy. So moving on to the general goods percentage of sales tax revenue. General goods are basic items usually needed for everyday necessities and include general tangible and consumable products, services such as furniture, office supplies, appliances, cleaning supplies, electronics, sporting goods, and specialty stores. As households became local offices and learning centers, spending shifted to categories that would improve their home spaces. Example, this category would include stores at Petsmart, Ultra Beauty, Home Depot, Walmart. This category fared well through the pandemic, and it continues to produce significant sales tax for the city. Sales at auto dealers have thrived during the COVID-19 pandemic as car prices surged due to chip shortages and robust demand from consumers, turning to personal transportation in the pandemic. The pandemic also drives up values of used cars and causes a boom for dealers. Sales of RVs and trailers also saw a strong growth as the pandemic pushed residents to seek alternative recreational activities like camping. Unlike many metropolitan cities that saw a plunge in auto sales in 2020, auto sales within the city held steady with some corridors showing mild increases during the height of the pandemic. Low interest rates and attractive manufacturer incentives enticed customers and created strong demand. Dealers and automakers shifted marketing efforts to online sales. So at least 80% of car buyers now are using laptops or smartphones during some part of the shopping process reports JD Power. More and more are completing the entire transaction virtually with dealers then dropping off at a buyer's home or office. So restaurants and food service businesses were some of the first economic activities severely impacted by the pandemic. This slide shows us that our local restaurants retooled and adapted to their new realities. Outdoor dining gave consumers the ability to feel safe and return to the restaurant dining experience. Federal, state, and local government assistance programs helped the food industry bridge the gap while navigating through the pandemic. As people shifted to remote work schedules and quarantine, we see that building and construction percentage of sales slightly increases and holds strong during the past two years. Home and tenant improvement activities trend upwards and remain strong with homeowners and business owners taking advantage of low interest rates and making improvements to their property. So bringing sales tax to a close, looking at the most current sales tax for major industry groups for quarter three, '21, specifically general consumer goods, internet sales, and autos and transportations, which make up 56% of the sales tax received. Overall, the strong percentage gains in the major industry categories signifies the continued rebound from the pandemic impacts of a year ago. Additionally, the estimates for the fourth quarter sales tax also continues to trend positive for the city. Staff looks forward to reporting these numbers at the next update.
So with regard to home prices, Simi Valley is seeing record-setting, along with the county of Ventura and state of California, record-setting real estate values. The median home value for single-family residences as of January 2022 was $810,000, representing a 15.71% increase over the median value of $700,000 in January of '21, and a 27.56% over the median value of $635 in 2020. The median home value for a condominium or townhome was $534,000 for January '22, representing a 14.33% increase, percent increase, I'm sorry, over the median value for '21, and a 24.96% increase over the median value for 2020. Experts in local real estate industry indicate that we have a shortage of available housing inventory, and that shortage, and a shortage in available apartment units, with more consumers chasing fewer available items and pushes, pushing prices higher. In the Simi and Moore Park area, our housing inventory continues to be a problem with inventory for '21 and '22, and only 2/3 of the inventory available in 2020. According to a July 2020 survey, and cited at the recent CERF 2022 Ventura Economic Forecast Conference, Oxnard, Thousand Oaks, and Ventura is the third least affordable area in the entire country, behind New York and San Francisco, and only followed by San Diego and Los Angeles. Unemployment rate comparisons are a key economic indicator because it signals the ability or the inability of workers to readily obtain gainful employment to contribute to the productive output for the economy. For quarter four, '21, the city had an unemployment rate of 3.43%. Low unemployment means it's a job seeker's market. And for comparison, in February of 2022, the unemployment rate for the United States was under four as well, 3.8%. At 3.43%, the city's in a significant improvement when compared to the city's 6.33% unemployment rate in quarter four of 2020. Our neighboring cities in Ventura County had similar unemployment numbers with a Delta variant surge during the months of October through December 2020. Oxnard trending the highest in quarter four, 2020, as it is the largest city in the county with a population of 207,000. As a whole, the unemployment rate continues to trend downward. And while not shown on this slide, Los Angeles County's unemployment rate of 7.1% kept it below 10% for the fourth consecutive month. The graph displayed here provides a comparison of the city's average employment shown against unemployment rates for the previous two-year period. The yellow bar graph identifies the number of jobs in the city for that particular quarter, and the green line graph identifies the corresponding unemployment rates. What we take from this analysis is that COVID obviously caused major disruptions with shutdowns and slowdowns in quarter two of 2020 for both employers and employees. In quarter one, 2020, the Employment Development Department reports approximately 65,000 jobs filled in the city's Simi Valley with an unemployment rate of 3.13%. With the onset of the pandemic, unemployment rose to 13.30% in quarter two, 2020. And with calls for social distancing, service sector jobs that depend on customer-provided interactions or involve the congregation of large numbers of people were the hardest hit. Jobs than employed workers in industries such as restaurants, hotels, childcare services, retail trade, and transportation services decreased dramatically in quarter two, 2020. Job recovery begins to trend upward in quarter four, 2020, through the end of the year in '21, with restaurant, retail, hospitality, and beauty services reopening their doors to the public. Although the number of jobs within the city are close to pre-COVID levels, economists predict that the fastest predicted growth will occur in the healthcare, healthcare support, construction, and personal care fields for 2022. Taking a look at the percentage of Ventura County businesses by industry for quarter three, '21, this pie chart identifies the top three businesses or business industry sectors, our education and health services, professional and business services, and trade, transportation, and utilities. Providing some examples of companies that fall in these sectors would be Adventist Health, Simi Valley, St. John's, St. John's Regional Medical Center in Oxnard, Simi Valley Unified School District, Simi Valley Transit, Amgen, Waste Management, as well as employment-like payroll services, consulting services, legal services, et cetera. City staff is working with Employment Development Department to attain to specific information related to business sectors and wages pertinent to the city of Simi Valley. However, this information is not available to the public using their online data tools. A custom EDD report is requested or needed to be requested from the state. Staff will return at a later date once that information is available. Moving on to weekly wages, average weekly wages and total employment for the county. As specific data for the Simi, for Simi Valley is not readily available, we just have county data here. We see the average weekly wage fall for the county in quarter three, 2020 due to pandemic impacts, and subsequently peak in quarter four, 2020. It is not unusual for wages to increase during quarter four as bonus compensation, seasonal employment, and retail overtime is implemented to meet the demand of holiday shoppers. Some of the industries that saw significant average weekly wage increases were construction and manufacturing, with finance, financial activities, and professional and business services seeing the most volatility in their wage fluctuations. According to the Harvard Kennedy School, U.S. wages grew at its fastest pace in decades in '21, but as we know, prices are growing even more. The Bureau of Labor Statistics reports that wages in December for existing job holders rose a record 5.9% compared with the year before, while workers who switched jobs saw their wages jump by an average of 8%, also a record high. Businesses within Ventura County as a whole experienced a 10.5% decrease in jobs with the onset of the pandemic, and still have not returned to full pre-COVID levels as of quarter four, '21. So switching gears from employment statistics and looking ahead to the city's development queue for today and for the future, the city has taken steps to rethink and reimagine the retail or office space that is not fully occupied or in need of revitalization. The enclave, currently under construction and located at 3039 Cochran, is within the strongest regional retail intersection with vibrant regional tenants like Target, Trader Joe's, Planet Fitness, Home Goods, Ross, Sprouts, Grocery Outlet, Hobby Lobby. This development launches the city's first mixed-use and live-work development with 58 townhomes, 106 family homes, and 6,600 square feet of commercial space available for retail, restaurant, or office use. The Santa Susana Plaza, recently approved by City Council, will serve to revitalize the Tappo Street corridor and provide 280 apartment units, of which 14 will be reserved for low-income households. And this mixed-use live-work development will provide 4,750 square feet of commercial space, as well as public park and recreation areas. And the city welcomes the completion of both of these projects, particularly as we enter 2023. As mentioned in our early presentation in January, Simi Valley continues to be a desirable location for businesses and their employees. Workers and businesses simply want to be in a community where the infrastructure is reliable, the environment is safe, and the staff and elected officials are available and accessible to the public. Several industrial projects are either in the construction queue or in the plan checks and middle process, or have already begun to lease their vacant spaces. ZBEX project of six industrial buildings will provide 508,000 square feet of industrial space. The Tappo Commerce Center is underway with over 344,000 square feet between five different buildings. The former school district site, industrial suites are already being leased and sold with only a few units remaining. And the Guardian Ridge project is also making progress on what will be an additional 49,000 square feet of industrial space between 16 different condo units. With the city adding 900,000 square feet of new industrial space between 2022 and 2023, this will create more opportunity for staff to work with the broker community to recruit and welcome new businesses.
So the city welcomes dozens of productions every year and has earned a reputation for fast, friendly service and permitting policies. Due to the city's unique geography and proximity to Los Angeles, filmmakers take advantage of filming, filming opportunities in various locations in the city, including facilities at the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District and Allied Studios. Several, several popular TV shows and movies, such as Station 19911, Being the Riccardos, NCIS, SWAT, Aw Rise, Promised Land, and as well as the infamous Boys of the Mayans MC, who ride their motorcycles through Simi Valley's hillsides from time to time, film in Simi. Looking at filming activity, the city is starting to see an upward trend in the issuance of film permits since the onset of the pandemic. The city issued 82 film permits in 2021, which represents a 78% increase compared to 2020 permits of 46. 2021 filming days of 1963, which includes activity from Allied Studios and Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District, increased 80% when compared to 1,090 days in 2020. So looking at the pie chart comparison, we see the percentage of the variety of entertainment categories that film here in the city. Movies, feature films, television, shows, as well as commercials represent the majority of filming. For over 25 years, the Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County has been and remains the primary business resource for companies of all sizes doing business in the city and Ventura County. We continue to partner with the EDCVC, WEVE, and the SBDC, Small Business Development Center, and share information with our business community. Current resources available include the recent Micro Business Grant, the California Competes Tax Credit and Grant Program, QuickBooks and Best Accounting Practices Employee Training, Workforce Training Program, California's Manufacturing Technology Consulting, and as always, no-cost business consulting services available to all businesses. So what's on the horizon? So as identified, as identified in staff's January presentation, we have contracted the services of the Nadelson-Dale Group to perform an economic development study for Simi Valley. This study will evaluate existing economic community and workforce conditions currently in existence in the city, as well as an evaluation of the conditions in the region. Staff had our initial meeting in January, and they are currently performing analysis related to retail and demand, office and industrial analysis, target industry cluster, and cluster development, and will also conduct a market, a hotel market study. Community outreach and stakeholder meetings are forthcoming. A team of staff has also met with Grun and Associates for the Tappo Street and Los Angeles Avenue corridor-specific plan. Review of the consultant's assessment has been completed, and marketing and outreach efforts will soon commence. To complement the economic development study, staff will incorporate findings of Grun Associates, Grun and Associates, funded by the SB2 and LEAP grant funding into the plan. And as soon as the public concludes providing feedback regarding the list of potential uses for the city's share of American Rescue Plan Act funding, and City Council takes its final action, staff will partner with EDCVC to roll out a revolving loan fund to the business community. This program will fund loans to business for the acquisition of equipment or inventory or make modifications to the business promise that will increase the business customer base or revenue. So this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Councilmember Lou Evinos.
I just have a couple of questions. The first one is, does the vacancy rate for retail include the mall, the town center?
It does. As of December, they started including the town center in our vacancy rates.
Okay. Sometimes it's included, sometimes it's not. That's why I'm asking. Thank you. And then I have another question. I know that, you know, online sales are up, and I know that some of that is due to the pandemic, but, you know, is it possible, like, we don't have a lot of furniture stores. Is it possible that people are buying stuff online too because they just can't find it here as well?
I'm sure it contributes, it always contributes. If you can't find it in your local store, in your local community, you're going to go online to find it. So that's certainly possible.
So are we making a concerted effort to try to recruit? I mean, aside from me going to ICSC, are we making, what other concerted efforts are we making to try to recruit the brick-and-mortar stores that would have the things that our residents would want? So that either, you know, they're not shopping for those things else, those things elsewhere online. So that we're, I mean, I know we get the sales tax revenue, but, you know, we also have people that want to physically sit on the couch or, you know, to try it out, or, you know, and if we don't have that here, we're going to have people go somewhere else and buy it somewhere else, and another city is going to benefit from that. So what are we actively doing, or what is part of our plan so that we can get the things that people want to buy, but that we don't have here?
Well, we are, we have been actively recruiting for furniture stores. In fact, when Macy's was selling furniture in their stores, they had one of the busiest stores in the, in the area because they were selling so much furniture. But I think the key issue is that the Nadelson-Dale study that we are doing is going to do a retail analysis on leakage, what is going, what's, what is, what buyers are buying outside the community, from what our residents are buying outside the community, and where we can target our, the retailers that need to be present here based upon what our consumers are buying. So we're waiting for the results of that. That's going to help us target certain retailers to fill the gaps that we have.
Okay, I have two, I have two more questions. One is, and I get asked this question a lot, I'm a mother of two teenagers. So what kind of retail businesses are ringing that would provide, shall we call it, entertainment for our youth? Like, you know, people have said, hey, it would be cool if we had an indoor, you know, surfing pool, or if we had a roller skating rink, or if we had, you know, stuff like that. I know we have laser tag, I know, I know, lived here over 20 years, I know what we have. But, you know, we are kind of lacking, there's stuff for little, little kids, and then there's stuff for, you know, older, but kind of like that 12 to 25-year-old range. We're kind of missing. So is there a concerted effort to try to, you know, have retail stuff that would meet their needs in terms of entertainment and besides the movie theater?
Yeah, again, the Nadelson-Dale study is going to be looking at those issues as well. And I can tell you, over, over my 30-plus years working here, we continue to hear there's nothing for teens to do in the community. So we're, it's always, it's always a battle. And a lot of times, it's driven by demographics and density. So we're constantly battling the 101 corridor where you've got, you have more rooftops, you've got you've got more accessible areas. So we continue to look at those entertainment options and see where we can fill some of the gaps in order to provide for things that our teens can do in the community.
Okay, thank you. I had one more question, but I just let my mind. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? No other questions?
I remember the question. Can I ask it still?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Kavanaugh brought up the fact that, when she gave a report a couple of weeks ago, that a lot of the new entrepreneurs are Latinas. So besides what, you know, EDV C is doing, what are we doing as a city? Is this revolving loan that you guys talked about for business owners, like, is that going to be available to Latinas? Are we going to try to court them, you know, to, you know, open up businesses here in the city? What are we doing to support them? If they're the ones that are opening, you know, the most businesses, and that's where the demographic trend is going, how are we accommodating them and supporting them?
Well, we do rely upon the EDC. They provide, that's why we use them, because they have the expertise. They have people, they have consultants in different categories that specialize in different categories of depending upon what business is in need of help, as well as working with entrepreneurs. All of their information that they have and all the webinars and workshops they have are in Spanish as well. All the material that they send out on the upcoming workshops, every month they send them out, are bilingual. So we're pushing out that information. That's what we rely upon. They're the experts, and we rely upon the experts. That's why we contract with them to do the business assistance in our community. The revolving loan program, if it does get going, if the council decides to move forward with that, it will be through the EDC, so we'll be able to tap into their consultants and their experts in order to provide that information to the Spanish-speaking entrepreneurs as well as others as well.
Okay, and I'm going to ask one more question, and I don't know if you can answer it. But we know that Orange County lost, you know, billions of dollars in revenue, in tax revenue, because they didn't have enough daycares. And that's an issue that's, you know, here in our city as well. We have a lot of working families, working mothers, working fathers. So is that issue being addressed at all? Are we just saying, hey, Parks and Rec, you guys deal with that in the school district? And I know we have a collaborative effort with the Boys and Girls Club, but this goes along, you know, with, you know, helping Latinas who are business owners, helping parents who want to work. How are we addressing that need? I didn't see it addressed in any of the reports. I assumed it would be in this report, the Economic Development Report, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gable, or does it belong somewhere else?
It's hard to track the daycare because it is, it tends to be a, most of them, the majority of them tend to be small businesses located in residential areas. Some have business tax, some don't, so it's a little bit difficult to track all those businesses. The county has a very active First Five that funds daycare programs and daycares to start them as well as keep them going. We've had some influx of First Five money come into Simi Valley to assist daycares. It is a tough sector right now for businesses to come back, and especially with daycares coming back because the population that would normally work in them often have decided not to come back to the workforce. So it is a challenge. It's a challenge across the state on daycares. But the, like I said, the First Five program that, in fact, Bruce Densley is on that board. Bruce is with the EDC. He has been pushing for more funding for the First Five program in order to push that out into Ventura County. We rely upon them to do that.
Well, when we had an economic shrinkage, you know, they cut funding from the First Five program and the Moore Park-Simi Valley program. So, you know, if we, I don't want us to be Orange County. I don't want us to lose revenue, you know, billions of dollars in revenue because we don't have the daycare that people need. So whether it's working with, you know, these industrial spaces, these employers that are coming in and saying, hey, you know, we offer a tax incentive or something if you offer onsite daycare, or if you collaborate with, you know, Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec just, you know, raise the rates on daycare. It's one of the reasons my kids didn't go to public school here, because I couldn't afford it. I could not afford the before and after-school care. It was cheaper to actually send my kids to private school in Canoga Park. And that's revenue lost from the city. So I would like at some point, if that would be a consideration, that we collaborate with the business or, you know, the industrial spaces or the businesses that are coming in, collaborate with the tri-agencies that we have in terms of how do we supplement that? Because if we're looking at revenues and how do we increase revenues, which, you know, pays for the roads and all the things that people want and, you know, residents want in the city, then we have to have access to daycare. So I would just like that to be a consideration.
Certainly, absolutely.
May I make a comment or two? I was going to go back. Okay, thank you. You were talking about the EDC, and Councilmember Lou Evinos, I did say it's women and Latinos are going to be the new builders. They're calling it the new builders for all of our businesses. But with the EDC, just this week, has four different webinars for free. First one's working with the county. If you want to be, if you have a service that you can be a vendor to the county, they're going to tell you how to do it. So that one's, it's all on the website. The next one is email marketing. Santa Barbara Score is giving that. WEVE is doing a complete Spanish-language webinar on the following day. And then Orange County SBDC is doing COVID funding information. So they're basically going to, these are all being done through the EDC. We've collaborated with all these different organizations. And so the COVID funding one is going to go over the EIDL loans, the PPP, how to get forgiveness on your PPP loans, and to help you with all of that. So all those things, that's just this week for the EDC. So it's edcollaborative.com, and everything is there. And again, like Brian said, everything is also in the Spanish. They have, just this last month, February, they served 338 clients, 41 were new client intakes. So that's our, our EDC is just going fantastic, and we just need to utilize them more and get the information out to our branches. That was going to be part of my report, but I did it now. Thanks.
And we do publish that on our social media platform. Every webinar that comes out, we do push that out on social media so our businesses can have access and sign up.
Okay, and the revolving loan program, that'll be consideration? Because that's something that the city is doing not EDC.
Oxnard and Ventura already have it, and we're looking at it.
Do it too? Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, this was a lot of information. It was intended to provide the council with a sense of where we're at. And hopefully, among the takeaways is we are blessed to have incredible staff working here that hopefully shows that we're kind of, we're paying attention at what's going on in the industries that affect us, what's going on in our community and trying to react to those. As I said at the beginning, we traditionally, the councils have traditionally looked at affordable housing and housing, public safety, fiscal strength, and economic development as the priorities. I would add infrastructure to that based upon where we're at today and some of the comments we have heard and the discussions we've had with City Council. But staff is here. We've stayed in the room, and we're more than happy to listen to any additional items the council may want to provide that will help us move forward into the future.
Thank you. I'd just like to congratulate and say thank you to every single staff member. I know you guys took a lot of time to get all that information together and to present it to us. And it really showed everyone up here and everyone out there exactly how hard you guys have all been working, especially during the pandemic. We've come out smelling like a rose after this pandemic. So that comes from good management, it comes from good staff, and it comes from good employees. So I personally just want to say thank you to every single one of you, and we, thank you for doing a great job for our community.
Excuse me, Elaine.
That's fine. That's fine, Mayor.
And then Ruth.
I would absolutely echo what DeeDee is saying. If I understand this time, this discussion today, basically, we've touched on everything. So theoretically, we could talk about anything right now and not be violating.
That was the intent.
No more talking. We've done enough. It's time to go home.
Actually, I had to, Mr. Casares had not made a peep this entire meeting, and so.
Well, now that you brought it up, you should be consistent with the council's goals and priorities.
Okay. Well, and that's, thank you. Actually, that is what I was going to suggest, is I believe that this is a time to discuss, in essence, what our goals and priorities are, although I don't want to make it a belabored process. And so this has been very instructive and very helpful. And as I read Brian's, Mr. Gable's summation of his, of the goals, I think it's support, the four things you listed were support the expansion of affordable, this isn't the report, support the expansion of affordable housing opportunities, public safety, fiscal strength, economic development. I was actually thinking what, it caused me to think, what do I believe are the five areas that would sum up our goals as a council? And so the list I came up with kind of subsumes all of that, but I just wanted to throw it out there just for discussion. Certainly, housing, that was one. But housing options for all incomes and needs, and encouraging affordable, and then careful planning to allow for that. And so I think that's what, because obviously, there are all sorts of needs in that housing element or in that housing realm. Public safety, I threw everything from police, fire, EMT, emergency response, but obviously, we want it safe. And that also includes, in my mind, emergency response, well, even the PSBSs, some of that has to do with public safety. Infrastructure, roads, water, sewer power. And by the way, I might add, I'm quickly going to say it right now, Mr. Fujiwaki, when I read your, basically, we put $4 million there, and the price tag right now is 13 million. And I saw your list of the major roads and noticed that LA Avenue between Sequoia and Sycamore is next year. We don't get to it this year, and I drive that every day to my office, and that's a mess. Anyway, I thought, well, maybe we, as I was hearing Carolyn's, I thought, maybe we need to put a couple. How many more million would it take to get to that right this year?
We've got some suggestions.
Okay.
We're coming back with some suggestions.
Okay, thank you. So the other two areas that I would throw in as my major goals, quality of life. And that is everything from our library to our senior center, to our arts, to our athletics, to our recreation. I just think that that's, people come here because, and live here because of our quality of life. And as we look at everything, that we've got to maintain, we've got to provide and support that. And then, of course, economics, everything from a balanced budget to reserves, to being transparent and to support economic development. So anyway, just wanted to throw out my five as I read yours. So those are some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Did you have your turn to talk, Councilmember Lou Evinos?
I ask questions, but if we're talking priorities, because this is what the agenda item is. You know, I would, I know that Golden State Water and, I'm sorry, Santa Susana Field Labs on here and Golden State Water. And thank you, Mr. Fujiwaki, for mentioning that a third of the water is supplied by Golden State Water. And those, you know, residents pay more than those who are, you know, who get municipal water from us. But, you know, I don't recall ever getting a report back on whether or not that was feasible to purchase that, and I don't see it in here. So, and I am going to bring up a nine B request with regard to water because of our situation with the water. But what I would like to see is a collaboration between all these things. Yes, we need to handle economics, but they all go hand in hand. You know, bringing businesses here means bringing workers here, but then having the housing that meets the needs of those workers. So having an analysis of what the average wages are for the workers of the businesses that are started here, and then making sure that we have housing for those workers, because otherwise, traffic is going to get worse and worse and worse and worse. And our air quality is going to get worse, and the climate change is going to get worse. So there has to be, I'm glad that we have all these departments, but there's also collaboration that needs to happen between the departments. And I know you guys do that, and I really appreciate all the department heads doing that. But I would like us to be intentional about that. That if we're bringing businesses and, you know, the average wage is $12 an hour, then we have to provide housing for those $12 an hour workers and be intentional about that. Because we will all be impacted if we don't address that issue, including our budget. So that's what I would like to see, a collaboration there. I didn't hear anyone talk, I asked a question about the Town Center, but I didn't hear anyone talk about the Town Center, what the plan is. You know, it's, I know they're trying to, you know, consolidate ownership. But I know, people ask me still all the time because they want to know what's happening with the mall. They're glad the Marshalls is there, they're glad the Ulta is there, but what's happening with the rest of the mall? So, you know, I would like that addressed in some way because that is economic as well. And again, one thing I did see here on page two of the report was mental health substance abuse. And while I'm really grateful that our youth council, you know, that was their topic, was, you know, the issue of mental health. I know that there's also, the county is falling short in terms of providing services that our residents need for mental health services. So how can we advocate or bridge that need so that we make sure that that need is addressed and that it's not always falling on the police department? And that we are meeting those basic needs. And that, again, part of that comes back to housing and jobs with living wages. So that's what I'd like, I'd like us to be intentional about a plan and then set it in terms of what we want it to be. And then see, are we meeting that goal or not meeting that goal? These reports are great. They're wonderful. I love numbers. I love data. But I would like us, as a city council, to say, here's our goal, here's what we would like to do, and how close are we to meeting that goal? I recognize that we're in a pandemic and things are always shifting. But, you know, I was glad that Mr. Pachowski came here and talked about economic development because it's really, really what we need to address here. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, there's no one on the board wanting to speak, and I'll do you a favor and not speak. So next item. Okay, next item. My echo over here, I was waiting for a second. 9A reports. Councilmember Judge, you go first.
On Tuesday, March 15th, I met with a citizen about a fence issue they had. They didn't get, I don't think they got the correct info from the city, so they gave me a call. I contacted the city manager, Gable, and he was going to address them and help them out, hopefully make it work for them. On Sunday, March 20th, I attended a court of honor for Trevor Cordova and Carson Minor. I have a long history with Troop 698. My son was in that troop, and he got his Eagle Scout through them. So I was very honored to be there to give those guys certificates from us. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. DeeDee Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Luckily, we only had one week, so our report should be fairly short. On Tuesday, March 15th, myself as well as Mayor Protan Littler attended a senior project for Sumaya Akbar. She's a senior at Santa Susana High School, and she put on a distinguished speaker's presentation. And we actually went, and it was on stem cell cancer research and treatment. The advertisement was for a very well-known doctor in stem cell research and such affiliated with USC. But we got to hear three students first. Oh, my gosh. Those three students were absolutely fantastic. They each gave a full presentation on the stage with their backdrop, all their slideshow, their PowerPoint. It was great. They were very, very, very impressive. So I just wanted to say thank, or congratulations to Sumaya Akbar on her wonderful senior project and to all those students who spoke. On Thursday, March 17th, I had the EDC board meeting. I already went over the different webinars I had made notes of. The EDC continues to grow. We are now actually going into Santa Barbara County and taking that over too, I guess. But it works out well because we're collaborating, so we'll be able to utilize what they have. They'll be able to utilize what we have. And Bruce Densley is our CEO, and he just does a fantastic job. So it's thanks to Bruce and all of his staff. And my last thing, I just wanted to wish a very happy birthday to my planning commissioner, Alan Mann. And that's it for my comments.
Okay. Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Mayor, I don't have anything to report. My son was home for spring break. I got to enjoy him and work my job. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, March 15th, I attended the youth council meeting with Mayor Keith Mashburn. It was good to be there, and we appreciated the youth as they discussed, as they debriefed all the great things that they did at the forum and the youth. all the great things that they did at the forum and, or the youth, what was that called? Symposium. Symposium, thank you, Mayor. Anyway, and discussed how they could improve and all the great things they did. Just clearly that they were looking ahead and, and looking at future planning, which is great. And again, as, as was mentioned earlier, applications are now open. They're already starting to look for applicants for next year. And it was a delight to attend that distinguished speaker series with Councilmember Kavanaugh. It was beautifully, really professionally done and just speaks to the, the strength of our students. And what's very fun too is it's Sumaya Akbar, who was the one who was, who was, it was her senior project. She would, would have been attending the youth council meeting because she's also on her youth council and she was also the moderator the previous week at the town, at the youth symposium. So clearly, not a busy, busy woman. But anyway, she's doing great things. So thank you. On Wednesday, March 16th, I met with Maggie Kessley. And I, we discussed her work with the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council. And she's there as a representative for our, for Bob Huber. And anyway, just some very interesting things that are happening in that, in that committee. I appreciate what she's doing there. On Friday, March 18th, I attended Royal High School and Sinaloa's Evening of One Act Plays. And I will tell you, it was really fun and well done. The first act was Sinaloa's 10 Ways to Survive the Zombie Apocalypse. And my granddaughter loved that one. And then Royal, after intermission, provided 13 ways to screw up your college interview. And my college student son who was with me really enjoyed that one. So it was, they, they touched all the, all the buttons. And the only thing I'll share is that on Sunday, March 20th, I played the harp with the Crown City Orchestra in Pasadena. And only reason I mention that, it is so good to be back and, and to have live performances. And it was Brooks Scottish Fantasy Violin Concerto by violinist was David Chou. It was phenomenal. And he played a Stradivarius in just a few feet in front of me and I was accompanying him on harp. And it was just glorious. So we need to keep supporting the arts. It just feeds the soul. So that's my comments for the, for the evening. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to salute Chad Cook, the gentleman we talked about earlier this evening, who is now the deputy fire chief Ventura County Fire Department. Chad served out here in Simi Valley for an extensive tour, served this community well, lived in this community. And I, I have to say that with the recent appointment of Dustin Gardner as fire chief and then Chad as the deputy chief, we've got a winning team at the county fire department. Also, it was brought to my attention that a local company, STS, received an award from Inc. Magazine. They were noted as the fastest growing private company and right here in Simi Valley. And that's a big honor to them. It's a big honor to the city because it's a very successful industrial business here. And through the city manager and others, we've reached out to them, trying to help them any way we can. The chamber's been there with us. And bottom line, I'm at the five-star chamber, Mr. Judge. And bottom line is, congratulations to STS for receiving this recognition. Thursday, March 17th, I don't usually do this, but it was my wife's birthday. She was, St. Patty's Day. On Friday, March 18th, started out as two scouts and we ended up with about 15, I think. And gave a tour of city hall. And that, as always, is a pleasure. And hopefully, they appreciated what they learned here. We had a little play council meeting and let them argue some points on traffic and building and what have you. It was really a lot of fun. And that's the end of my report. So, let's see here. Next up, future agenda items. No one down here? Nobody's, oh, yes, I knew. Okay, Councilmember Louvenos.
I already, I already told you I was gonna bring this up. So this is for, our role is water board trustees. I would like us, there was another report coming down, you know, we're in the middle of a multi-year drought. I would like us to consider, you know, either changing water rates or reduction of water usage. They're asking right now for us to have a reduction of water usage by 15%. And the best way they're saying to do that is by, you know, changing landscape with drought tolerant plants. But we need to address the drought. We need to address the water issue. You know, when I hear residents saying, oh, you know, I, I fill my pool every month, then, you know, we have an issue there. So I would, I would like that to be brought up in terms of what can we do to reduce water usage so that, you know, we have enough water because we're not going to. Can we bring that up in a future agenda item?
You know, Mr. CM, didn't we, I remember bringing that up not too many months ago.
It has come up when the, the state changes their water allocation, which they just did last week. The state water project will be allocations will be down to 5%. That's usually followed by Metropolitan Water District and then in Cuyagus, passing down their changes to the, the stage of drought and the stage of cutbacks, the conservations, the word I'm looking for, that are required. It, it's, it's coming soon. The next, the state will be doing their next assessment in, I believe, April, middle of April on the water, their final assessment on the water and the snowpack in the water. At that time, I would imagine we're gonna start seeing some additional changes that are gonna be pushed down from the state and our, and who we buy our water from is MWD in Cuyagus. So I, I think it's coming anyway. So I would, I would ask for a little bit of patience until April, then we see what's coming down from the state.
Okay, I just, I prefer to be.
We may be forced into it.
Yeah, I prefer to be proactive than reactive. That's just my, that I, I like to have the bigger perspective, so. The other question I would like to be addressed, that I didn't hear addressed tonight, was at one point in time, a couple of years ago, we had, the city employees were able to do reviews, like there was a survey for whether or not they, you know, how they felt about their job, about working here, what we could do to improve, what was good, what was that bad, the good, the bad, and the ugly. I'd like to see those surveys done again. I think they should be done annually. I, as an employee at my school district, I get to review my, you know, my, my principal, my school and the school district. I would like for our employees to get that opportunity as well to see how we can improve, what we're doing well. And, you know, we have 20 vacancies. What can we do to keep people with experience and what can we do to recruit people?
We can certainly take a, take a look at doing a survey. It is, it is quite an effort in order to pull that off. So I'd have to make sure that we have staff available in order to do that. But we can, we can take a look at updating the survey that we did.
And that, that survey was last done with the Budget Advisory Committee, was it not?
It was done through that, yeah. So it was, Linda Hellman, is it 2018 that we did it? Yeah. And it was a, you know, it was a, it was definitely a different time back in 2018 than it is today.
So it's been four years. Well, I think it's time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Elaine.
Thank you. Given our, our economic discussion this evening, I think maybe this is the time. We have signed a letter of intent with Kauaia to explore and look at a piece of property for development to bring light show, et cetera. Anyway, I understand that they've also given us a lease that's being looked at. I, I would propose that it be appropriate to have a committee of two council members or on this dais to look at that process, the pros and cons, to maybe explore just what it means, maybe even delve into more what the, what the facility would look like, but to just take an active role in, in that process and, and see if it is really something worthwhile for our community and what it would, would take. And so I'm, anyway, or what, what our role should be or how active or proactive or not we should be for the process. So I'm proposing a committee of two, similar to what obviously was done for waste management through the years. It's, a committee of two's been done for various things through the years, is my understanding.
So we are reviewing the lease that was sent to us from Kauaia to take a look at and provide comments back. And so we, we haven't received anything from Kauaia to really to even have a discussion. We, we don't have a site plan, we don't have a business plan, we don't have anything that would even start a discussion. So what it may be is when we get to the point where we bring a lease to the city council for your consideration, that might be the time that we could start guiding.
So when, so we, I mean, if we form, form something right now, we could be very minorly involved, just look at the lease as well and then wait and, or, or be part of the discussion.
Which is really good. If, if the council wants to create an ad hoc committee to, to look at, to look at the lease and decide lease deal points, that's certainly something that the council can do.
Would we do that by district or how?
You would, well, an ad hoc is two people designated by the city council. Ad hoc by, by its intent is, is short-term, so you would, and, and topic-specific. So it would be specific to this topic. You would meet, ad hoc committees don't have to even follow the Brown Act. You can get together, you can meet, and then when the task is done, you dissolve. So you can certainly do that, but they're intended to be short-term in, in their intent.
I'd have no problem participating in that.
I'm sorry?
I said I'd have no problem participating in that. That would be good.
I don't think we could take action on it, but if you'd like me, like, we can bring something back to, for the council to create an ad hoc committee.
So I assume that would be the same as the second for me, right? Correct, Mike?
Sure.
Then let's move forward to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. This evening, we're going to adjourn in memory of Reverend Maggie Erpen. I think most of us knew Maggie. And I, I wasn't sure how long ago she passed, but anyway, wonderful lady in the community, very active at the chamber and what have you. And unfortunately, we lost her. So we'll adjourn tonight in her memory. Done.